Call the meeting to order. We are live streaming, just reminding. And first we'll have a moment of reflection. Thank you. You can make a disclosure for key or hearing interest now or at any point in time through the meeting should want to rise. And we need to confirm the agenda and I have two additions. One will be for item six point one delegation, item seven point one point six Pierre Chauvin. M H B C planner and item thirteen point one close session. A matter pertaining to potential litigation republic works. So if I could have a motion to confirm the agenda with those two additions, that would be great. Counselor Wilhelm. Seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor, that's carried. Perfect. Moving on. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. And we have. Items five point one to five point four and the October sixth, two thousand and twenty two council minutes. Does anyone want to see anything? Hold for discussion, Counselor Kastner.
Good morning, Warden Herson. Thank you. I just actually want to address the minutes. I exited the meeting at twelve thirty or around there last meeting, which is noted in the minutes. But my return was at one oh five and it's not noted. And then after that, I did, I was involved in a, in a resolution, so it might want to be noted that I returned and wasn't to go host at that meeting. For the rest of it.
That is correct. So we will change that for the return.
Yes, so through the morning, I'll make a note. I think that change happened in closed session, so I'll just put it out to the closed session portion. To indicate that you, you were present after that.
Yeah, I actually, Clerk Sager, I think I returned just as announcements were wrapping up in the public session. But that could be investigated in the, the, the recording of the minutes, if you don't mind.
Okay, so no one else wants to see anything for discussion? Counselor Hurlock?
Five, three, the strong mayor's act there.
You want me to move that down further down or do you want to discuss?
We can quick discuss it now. I'm not sure if, I've had some complaints from constituents on this and rightfully so of this strong mayor's. Powers being given to a couple of the bigger cities and. Of course, there's fear that this is just going to rifle down and there'll be a trumping of powers within councils through there's. Has anybody else looked at this or had any concerns from constituents up at the north end? Just curious.
Counselor Kastner, you wanna?
Yes, North Perth Council did address this. In response to letters from other communities during a consent agenda session and we did. Opt to send a letter to the province objecting to the strong mayor's action. So indeed, we did discuss it and, and felt as Counselor Hurlick is suggesting that. There is due cause for concern, the province should reconsider that move.
Yeah, West Perth also did the same, correct? So do you wanna, do you want to have that vote and send a letter of support?
I, I would like that. I would move that actually, that Perth County support. That we do not support these stronger powers, so.
Okay, so. Do I have a second for that motion, Counselor Calhoun? So that is to send a letter supporting. What we have from the municipality of Thames Centre and we've actually had that from about twenty different municipalities already.
It is, I just thought we should address it.
Okay, so we're gonna send the letter. Those in favor of that motion, that's carried. So we'll go back to the consent agenda and I have a motion that consent agenda items five point one to five point one four. And the October sixth, two thousand and twenty two council minutes as amended. Be approved or accepted, approved, accepted. Counselor Duncan, Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor, that's carried. And we're gonna move on, public meetings, hearings and delegations. And then we're going to staff reports and seven point one point one planning services. Is the plan a subdivision for North Perth twenty two oh one sound six investments? What's that? That's, oh, Pierre, yeah, Pierre's on there. So we're gonna bring Pierre in first. Morning Pierre.
Members of council. I'm here just to speak with respect to official plan amendment number two oh six on your agenda, which is agenda item seven point one six. Here in support of the staff recommendation. Also in support of the North Perth Resolution, which sought to change one of the wording of the. Special policy with respect to the timing. The show component of this mixed use development. This is an exciting. For the town of Listowel and North Perth internal. This is a mixed use development somewhat of a new. Type of development in the community, not new across the province, but definitely something different. Where we have a mix of and range of types of uses on one site, including multiple residential. Which will include rental housing for the community upwards of almost two hundred units. Fifteen percent of which will be affordable housing. And I should point out that when we're talking about affordable housing, this is affordable in the sense of the definition. Described by the Canadian Morgan and Housing Corporation, C M H C. Whereby where we, our client is seeking. Federal financing for this project, provided that they meet certain criteria in terms of affordability. Which is slightly different than I would just point out than what is in the provincial policy, but nonetheless, it is still affordable. Based on thirty percent of the median rental income of tenants. And if based on today's numbers, that would effectively equate to rents in the order of a thousand and thirty two dollars a month. And when going rates in certainly Listowel, an apartment down the corner from our development is going at fourteen hundred dollars a month. This is certainly below the market rate and in my view, very affordable, so. Again, I'll, I'll stop here and, and just say that I'm in support of the staff recommendation. As well as the resolution that was supported by North Perth Council on Monday evening. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Pierre. So we are gonna do with that seven point one point six. But anybody have any questions for Pierre at this point in time? Don't see the hands going up. You will be around later when we get to that in the agenda. Thanks Pierre. So I have a motion here that council receives the delegation from Pierre Chauvin. M H B C planning and item seven point one point six moved by Counselor Calhoun. Seconded by Deputy Ord Nagin. Those in favor, that's carried. And now we're gonna get seven point one point one. And that is the application of the plan subdivision North Perth twenty two oh one sound six. I believe Suzanne is doing that, right? Get Suzanne up there. Morning Suzanne.
Good morning, Warden. Morning council.
We're ready for the twenty two oh one application for plan of subdivision.
Thank you, I'll share my screen now. Can you see my slide now?
Yep.
Did you just tell me, can you see my cursor moving?
Yep.
So there is, these are two subdivision applications in North Perth. File NP twenty two oh one and MP twenty two oh two. The applicant is Steve Mullenstein, Sound Six Investments and Scott Patterson is the planning consultant. You can see the red star on the screen now, this is the location of these two plans of subdivision. The public meeting for both applications was held on September first at county council. This is the, the two, this is an air photo showing both subdivisions, MP twenty two oh one to the south. Which is two point two acre property. And NP twenty two oh two to the north, which is a three point nine acre property and you can see both front Walton Avenue. This is the designation in the Perth County Official Plan, so the black dotted line is, shows the boundary between the Listowel Official Plan to the south. And the Perth County Official Plan designations to the north. So, and you can also see Walton Avenue here. So the properties that are outlined in red. Are the locations of the two files, MP twenty two oh one to the south and MP twenty two oh two to the north. Both being plans of subdivision and both are in the urban fringe designation in the county official plan. So first, MP twenty two oh one, this again is a two point two acre property. Six residential lots are proposed and you can see lots one to six on the screen now. Each property is about point three seven acres, fifteen hundred square meters. And it's proposed to be serviced on municipal services accessed by Walton Avenue. The planning report reviews the planning considerations that were discussed. And the staff recommendation is that county council approve the application for draft plan of subdivision file MP twenty two oh one. Submitted by Sound Six Investments affecting lands described as part of park block A and B, registered plan two ninety. Known as eight two nine six Walton Avenue Wallace Ward. And the municipality of North Perth subject to the conditions which are included in the council package. Would you like me to stop there, Mr. Warden, or should I continue with MP twenty two oh two?
No, we'll just maybe stop and we'll do, we'll deal with twenty two oh one first and then well, when we're done with that, we'll move on to twenty two oh two. I think it'd be appropriate. So questions for Suzanne. An application twenty two oh one, sound six investments. Don't see any, oh, Counselor, right, you get your hand up there?
So two weeks ago, we turned down the guy over there by the fairgrounds because of density. These are, I, I'm sorry, but I have three computers going here to try, I got the Perth County G I S on one. This one, so these are extremely big lots with no future development behind them, right? To the east. Like.
That's right.
Is, is it because they're not in the town of Listowel that we think this is a better idea than if they're in the town of Listowel?
Would, would you like me to speak to this question, Mr. Warden, or?
Please.
It's a question for North Perth Council.
Well, maybe both.
I, I can start. The planning department, so the file that you considered earlier was the, an extension of the modify. An extension of the lunar subdivision that was initially draft approved in two thousand and four, so that was an extension. The planning department was supportive of that application. And then there were concerns raised with regards to affordable housing specifically in that site. And that council, council decided to not support that file. The planning department's recommendation is consistent on the MP twenty two oh one, the file that you're receiving today. The, the, because the, the urban fringe policies in the Perth County Official Plan do not include any specific requirements for affordable housing. The applicant is clear that he's not proposing to include affordable housing in these six lots. The lot areas are point three seven acres, which is larger than is required for service properties. But it, I mean, they're not, it's not much larger than what we are finding existing lots in the community. And there, there is no reason to not support the, the application, I would say. Is this, the, the configuration of the lots also is in part informed by a proposed stormwater management pond. On the east side of the property. Those are all my comments and I happen to answer any other questions.
Thanks Suzanne. Other comments or does North Perth want to just make any comments with regards to that? Counselor Kastner.
Mr. Ward, thank you. I, I think Suzanne has covered this fairly well. I, I will point out that North Perth. Entered into agreements with that company, Sound Six. With regards to securing a location for a much needed stormwater management pond in the area. That influenced the fabric, if you will, of lots in that area. And, and we received a fairly equitable and, and in fact generous offer. Was accepted, you know, by us from the proponent. I think with some understanding that, that with regards to the development of the adjacency. Immediately there that, that we would be, you know, permissive, if you will. And as you, as you've heard, planning has no concerns about those lots and that configuration in that space, so. You know, North Perth has, has been beneficiary of, of a certain amount of kindness from that developer. In this, and while that isn't inherently the reason to look differently at things. Because this whole development is consistent with planning policies in that area.
Okay, other comments or questions? There's got one quick one. I think we kind of had this discussion on September the first. But we did the official plan amendment about density and the stormwater management in behind. So I think we pretty well covered the. If I recall correctly, correct me if I'm wrong.
I remember the conversation.
Okay, I have a motion here. Council receives the application for plan of subdivision file NP twenty two oh one, sound six investment report. And that council approved the application for draft plan of subdivision. File NP twenty two oh one submitted by Sound Six Investments. Affecting lands described as part of park block A and B. Registered plan two ninety, known as eighty two ninety six Walton Avenue. Wallace Ward municipality of North Perth, subject to the conditions attached and that was in the report. Moved by Counselor Kastner, seconded by Counselor Duncan. Last chance for comments or questions. Those in favor, she's carrying. Okay, Suzanne, we'll go to twenty two oh two now.
Okay, so this is the lot, lot fabric showing on the screen now for NP twenty two oh two. The, this is nine lots. So there are six lots that immediately front Walton Avenue and then three lots that are access Walton Avenue via an easement. And this is also a servicing easement. All lots are proposed to be serviced with municipal services. The area, the total area of this site is three point nine acres and the lots fronting Walton Avenue. Are this about the same size as MP twenty two oh one. The lots with the. Flag pole shaped driveway are larger because of the driveway. The staff recommendation is also to approve this plan of subdivision with conditions.
Thanks Suzanne. Questions or comments on this one, NP twenty two oh two? Don't see any hands, not hearing any voices. Okay, so I have a motion. Council receives the application for plan of subdivision file NP twenty two dash oh two. Sound six investment report and that council approved the application for draft plan of subdivision filed twenty two slash oh two. Submitted by Sound Six Investment affecting lands described as part of park lot A and B. Registered plan two ninety and part of an unnamed street. Registered plan two ninety Wallace Ward municipality of North Perth. Counselor Calhoun moves. Seconded by Counselor McDermott. Last chance for comments or questions on this one. Those in favor, that's carried. We're gonna move on, seven point one point three. And that is development application status report for Q three and I believe Sally's gonna do that. Or we change?
Bring Sally.
Can we bring Sally in? Morning Sally.
Morning Warden and good morning council.
And so we are ready for the Q three status report.
So this is the second of our quarterly reports being offered to council to give you information about. Sort of the number of applications being received. The status of their processing and give a general sense of. How things are. Distributed among the different planning application types and across the diff, the each of the four lower tiers. So. It, we continue to have a steady stream of applications coming in. I think the most notable thing about this past quarter is that we have. Found our way through some of the backlog that sort of built up during the very early spring and. Through the summer months where we had some transition in staff. At both tiers and the diligence of staff to get through the applications, so. It's starting to feel like we're caught up to some degree on some of those. Files and pre consultations that, that, that started initially in sort of the February, March area. And having, having said that, the, the volume remains high. And I think that I will leave it there. I'm happy to answer questions for council.
Thanks Sally. Questions for Sally on her report here on the update? Nice to hear you say you're, I think you're getting caught up.
I almost hate to say it, but it says.
And don't, don't jinx yourself.
Exactly.
Okay, I have a motion here. Nobody has any questions. The council received a development application status report for Q three, two thousand and twenty two. And access to studies associated with development applications report. And the council directs staff to develop a process for posting studies associated with development applications. To the corporate website for viewing instead of attaching to public meeting and recommendation reports. In their respective agendas. Counselor Kastner, you're moving that? Secondary. Counselor Wilhelm. Last chance for comments or questions. Those in favor. Scary, perfect, moving on. So next is the update on the municipal comprehensive review. And Sally's doing that and we're also going to have Adam Fisher. And Watson Associates join us. So, there he is. Morning Adam.
Morning everyone.
Okay, so Sally, Adam, I'm not sure which one he has taken the lead, but drive on.
Well, Adam is here to present the, the work that Watson and Associates have done thus far on a request from council. In the summer, late summer twenty twenty one to update the growth projections and land needs assessment. That is part of the conference review and, and therefore. That information is used to inform growth plans for the, for the new official plan. And council at the time felt that the twenty twenty results and final report on. This similar data was perhaps. Needing updating, just given the, the circumstances at the time, the, the fast growth rates that we. Appeared to be. Experiencing and so. Staff at both the lower tier and the upper tier spent a fairly considerable amount of time gathering information. About building permit data for a five year period. As well as doing a new, a fresh look at vacant lands in, in each of the settlement, so service settlement areas. And so that data has gone together with the new census information released earlier this year. And the Ministry of Finance, Population Projections and Economic Trends, and so that's the work that Watson has been doing today. They're gonna talk to us about what those growths. Projections look like now in comparison to twenty twenty and they will go on after today. To finish a land needs assessment and both those pieces of information are very important for the development of the new official plan. So I'll turn it over to Adam.
Thank you Sally. And thank you everyone for having me here today. As Sally mentioned, it's, actually I'll bring it up on the next slide here. Things have been changing in Perth County quite significantly. So as a bit of a background, we were retained in twenty eighteen. To work on the official plan review, Watson working on that growth component. And through that work, a report was released in April of twenty twenty, so right as the pandemic was hit. And this, this report captured the growth outlook for the county. As Sally mentioned, things have been changing quite significantly, both leading up to the pandemic and as we know across Ontario, Canada and Perth County as a whole. The housing and population outlook has, has shifted. So we've been retained to update this forecast, not only in, in regards to the, the. Different growth outlook that we're now witnessing, but also stretching that forecast out in additional five years to twenty fifty one. As Sally mentioned, today's presentation is, is strictly focused on the growth outlook at the countywide level. Following this presentation, we will then dig into the allocations by area municipality and settlement area. And then contemplate the land needs for each area municipality. So this slide here just gives a really quick overview of essentially how we get to a growth forecast and I won't spend too much time on it. But there's a few, few main components here. One is your export based employment outlook, so you know, manufacturing type jobs that bring people to Perth County. And increase the population and then there's also. Increases to the population that can occur for a very various reasons such as quality of life, housing affordability. And those population increases then generate employment growth as well for population serving employment that we like to call it, you know, things like work at home. Commercial institutional, things like that. And that's kind of the, the broader overview and then within that, we do take a really fine look at. Anticipated net migration trends into the county, births, deaths, age structure. The, the household formation rates, so for example, looking at housing turnover, new units is a, is a useful metric, but we also contemplate. Those houses that currently exist within the county, how they would accommodate future population over the next thirty years. So those are the numerous factors that get brought into this countywide level and then as I mentioned, we, we then allocate that growth once, once that counting work is completed. So I have a slide here just highlighting the recent updates to the growth plan as well as the twenty twenty one census for population. The census still hasn't released employment, so we don't have that for twenty one, but we do have population. And I've just highlighted a few sections here in red, really to emphasize the increased growth outlook for the G G H outer ring, which is in that burgundy color on the map there. So in the last twenty years, annual population growth was at about twenty six thousand per year. And the growth plan is now forecasting that this would be approximately forty thousand a year, so not quite double, but it is a significant shift in growth outlook. And that really contextualizes Perth County's position because you're right on the cusp of this outer ring. And that pressure that gets, gets pushed onto the outer ring continues to get pressed and, and, and further beyond the, the outer ring. For example, over the last five years, when we look at specific migration patterns for intra provincial migration, so this is just. Individuals within Ontario moving from one census division to another. We find that largely, this is the, the family demographic, we would call it, that's moving into Perth County. And we do see it largely from the Waterloo Census Division, they're, they're the largest intra provincial migration source at twenty five percent. Of all migration, but also here on Wellington and Middlesex as, as well as Waterloo. Account for fifty percent of that intra provincial migration into Perth County. Over the last five years. So as you can see that it's not only the G G H outer, outer ring that's driving growth, but you also have growth. Essentially from all of your surrounding census divisions really pushing in towards Perth County for a variety of reasons, whether that be housing affordability, housing options. Quality of life. quality of life, labor opportunities, agriculture, all, all these many, many factors. And then I have some slides here just to go through some recent economic trends. This slides a lot, but we do like to use it. It can, can be a pretty useful metric just to get a picture of, of what's really been happening on the labor front since the COVID pandemic. So unfortunately, we don't have this data at the Perth County level. The finest data that we can get on this is the, is combined for Perth here on Bruce and Gray. But I, I still do think it presents a helpful picture to, to understand what's been happening since twenty twenty. So as you can see in the, in the bars themselves, this represents the total employed labor force. And then the red line represents the unemployment rate for Ontario and the orange line represents the unemployment rate for Perth County. So right off the bat, you can see that there are seasonal waves of employment, does, does seem to peak in, in the summer months, but beyond that, we, we're surprised to see actually not too significant of a decline due to COVID. So in, in a lot of municipalities we work at, we've worked at, we've seen a pretty substantial drop, especially in that June or July twenty twenty period. So as you can see, before COVID, the employer labor force was at a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and this only declined to a hundred and fifty thousand at that peak of the pandemic unemployment. And throughout this whole process, Perth County also had much lower unemployment rates than we saw at the province. So or sorry, the, the combined labor or combined economic region, I should say. So this picture really tells us that this area of Ontario did relatively well compared to the rest of the province in terms of maintaining employment and, and generating job growth over the last two years. And as you can see in this final September twenty twenty-two, which is the most recent data we have, the unemployment rate in the region is extremely low. So I'm sure there's much rhetoric about, you know, companies unable to find people that can work. And such a low unemployment rate would be somewhat indicative of that is, there's almost a lack of skilled labor available to, to accommodate job growth. The next slide here, so while I said we don't have census data, there is another database called MZ that does record employment data across Ontario. So I just wanted to summarize here the last ten years of Perth County. As you can see that we've listed every major sector here and that percentage annual growth over the last ten years. And we've really seen strong growth in this, what you'd call creative class sectors such as real estate and rental and leasing, arts and entertainment, science and technical services. But we've also seen strong growth in the manufacturing sector as well, which is great to see, coming back to that export-based job growth pulling in population into the area. We have seen some declines, particularly in information and cultural industries, educational services, and a few other, but not too, too significant. What is important to, to recognize here is that most of the job growth actually occurred between twenty eleven and twenty sixteen. So while Perth County has been experiencing quite strong population growth over the last five years, employment has lagged a little bit behind. And in part, that be, can be because of COVID and, and the time of enumeration for this data. And I'll speak to that a little bit later in, in the slides. And here we have a, a slide on the building permit activity over the last ten years. Twenty twenty-two is an estimate. It's an extrapolation of the data, but nonetheless, as you can see, activity was really ramping up before COVID. So I know in a lot of places, we, you know, we hear that, oh, COVID kind of changed the market entirely. But really how we, we like to look at is, is it's trends, these trends were happening before COVID. And in certain ways, the pandemic really just accelerated these trends that were happening before, such as work at home, you know, that shift was occurring. But really COVID allowed that shift to happen at an accelerated rate. So you can almost understand it as this great accelerator. And we do see that housing activity actually did peak before COVID in twenty nineteen, but it has remained strong over the last three years. And it is important to emphasize as well here that while activity's been strong, we also don't want to just look at this five-year window of, of strong housing growth and, and blow that forward thirty years. There's a lot of factors that go into that, such as housing turnover and, and, and age structure. We know there's a recession looming, interest rates are out of, are raising inflations out of control. So there's a lot of factors that can, can really shift growth outlook. So it's important to try and temper expectations on, on both ends of the spectrum here. And here I have a slide demonstrating population growth in the last five years. I, I didn't give the presentation myself, but a colleague, I believe in twenty twenty, had this similar slide. And back then it showed that Perth County had a, a growth rate of point one percent between eleven and sixteen. So one of the lowest on this figure. But as you can see now, and the last five years, it's, the county's experienced a growth rate of one point four percent, which is quite strong compared to the surrounding region. And of course, areas like the city of Waterloo, you would anticipate to have a significantly strong growth rate. But nonetheless, within that regional context, Perth County has, has excuse me, seen significant gains. And while we're not getting into the growth allocations today, I just thought it would be useful to have a slide just to see what's been happening locally. So this represents occupied dwelling growth according to the Statistic Canada Census. So the first pie graph on the left here represents two thousand and one to two thousand and sixteen. Pie graph on the right represents sixteen to twenty-one, just to see what kind of patterns have been happening over the last five years. And and I would say that this isn't necessarily a dramatic shift, and we are looking at a bit of a smaller sample size, but we see that North Perth did capture a bit stronger of growth compared to the last fifteen years from seventy-one to eighty-one percent. And largely that was at the expense of, of West Perth's growth rates over the last five years. Now getting into the, the fun part, the long-term population, housing, employment forecast. So as Sally mentioned, the Ministry of Finance has, each year they release a growth forecast for Ontario or each census division within Ontario. So that's what this represents here. And it is important to note that Saint Mary's and Stratford are part of this census division. So unfortunately, sometimes that's the best data we have. And, and so in the case of Ministry of Finance, it does include that. But as you can see here, the orange represents what the ministry was saying in twenty twenty. The green represents twenty twenty-one and the dark blue represents twenty twenty-two. So that outlook from the province or from the ministry, I should say, has, is essentially doubled in two years' time. The incremental growth outlook in twenty twenty was fifteen thousand five hundred. And they've now forecast thirty-one thousand one hundred. So really a doubling of, of growth outlook for the Perth Census Division. Within a two-year span from the Ministry of Finance, which really just speaks to those, those shifting patterns. And then they're not just a blip on the radar, but growth is anticipated to remain strong over the next twenty-five, thirty years. And this slide represents our revised growth forecast. So this is the population forecast from twenty twenty-one to twenty fifty-one. So as you can see, the twenty twenty forecast that was in that April report is in the blue line here, and then our revised growth forecast is in the gold line. So it's quite a substantial shift from, it will look at twenty forty-six from twenty forty-six just for comparative sake. Because twenty fifty-one wasn't in the previous forecast, but we're increasing from fifty-one thousand people by twenty forty-six to sixty thousand four hundred. And this represents more than a doubling of the growth rate. So it is a substantial shift in a positive direction for the county. And we do anticipate that, as I mentioned, you know, there are reasons to temper expectations, but that growth will remain strong over the forecast period. And, and this does represent a reasonable fit within that Ministry of Finance forecast as well. So for example, this represents nearly sixty percent of what the Ministry of Finance is saying for the Perth Census Division. And roughly speaking, Perth County has represented about fifty to sixty percent of that Census Division growth historically. So it does fit in with, with that general outlook for the Census Division and then the broader economic region. And this is just a slide on the age structure. So as you can see, we've got ten-year increments here. And in looking at the seventy-five plus age group, we'd anticipate that that population group's almost doubling over the next thirty years, which will place a lot of pressure on, you know, seniors, housing, institutional uses. And the aging of the population generally means that more migrations required to accommodate growth. So the, the greater the population that's expected, essentially the greater migration. And we've, you know, as I mentioned, looking at those trends from Waterloo and Wellington and so on and so forth, kind of driving that growth and, and largely in that family demographic. And compared to the April twenty twenty report, the age structure is similar. But to achieve this increased growth outlook, we did anticipate a little bit younger of a population coming into Perth County based on a few years of, of updated data. And housing activity and, and these household formation rates. And here we have a slide on the five-year housing activity. These numbers represent annual average growth. So as you can see, over the last twenty years, housing activity represented about one hundred occupied dwellings a, a year, according to statistics, Canada Census. And not sure if you can see my cursor here, but of course, historically, that has been increasing substantially. And we would anticipate that housing growth will remain quite, quite strong. And we've looked at development applications and, and recent permanent activity would suggest that this a, average of about two hundred and eighty-six is in line with that last five years of, of housing activity. But over the forecast period, it will start to moderate as you kind of see more of that housing replacement in the existing housing stock and and as that, that trend will continue over each five-year period. Compared to the last twenty twenty report. So this is an average of two hundred and eighty-six units. In that report, we had an average forecast of one hundred and seventy-five units. So I know I've thrown a lot of numbers at you. It's kind of the struggle of my profession, but suffice to say that's an additional one hundred units a year we're anticipating for the counting compared to that work that was done just two years ago. And lastly, just looking at the, the distribution of the housing mix, we do anticipate that there will be some strong growth within the less, less prominent dwelling types historically, in terms of just seeing your singles and semi-detached. We do anticipate will be some strong demand for row houses as well as apartment dwellings. And it's really important to have this mix, especially with an aging population as seniors look to potentially sell their home and maybe move into a condo or to provide an affordable option for, for young families to, to enter the housing market. And then we have the employment forecast here. Similarly, the growth outlook has increased compared to the twenty twenty report, though not as significantly. As you can see here, a, the, the, one of the big differences is that twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one growth outlook. The pandemic definitely put a slow on that employment growth, but we would anticipate that it starts to rebound over the next five years and continues to remain strong. Again, this was looking at MZ data in the last five years. And the growth rates are nearly doubling compared to the previous analysis to the current analysis. So it, it does represent a strong shift, not only in population, but employment as well. And this slide represents essentially what I'm focusing here is the activity rate, which represents the percentage of the population to jobs within the county. So as you can see, historically, it has jumped up and down quite a bit. And then this recent period in twenty twenty-one, it, it would have dropped significantly just because of that COVID picture. But we would forecast that over the next thirty years, that activity rate does start to, to creep up a little bit, representing the fact that jobs will outpace or jobs won't be declining at a rate compared to the population. Suffice to say that both residential and non-residential activity will, will be growing within a step of each other. And lastly, just a slide showing the employment forecast by major sector. Similar to the, the old forecast, but we do see a, a little bit of a shift towards work at home, particularly in commercial services. I'm sure work at home will be a facet for the next thirty years. And of course, we've seen a recent acceleration in the last five, but it may not be as prominent over the next thirty years. And just a, a bit of a side note for work at home, if someone has a hybrid work environment, they still would be classified as whether it be commercial or institutional, they wouldn't be captured as work at home through the census. So it's, it's purely, if you only work remotely, you get captured in that work at home category. And lastly, just on the conclusions, so to summarize, Perth County's forecast is expected to increase from forty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-two-one to sixty-two thousand nine hundred by twenty fifty-one, representing an increase of twenty thousand eight hundred people. Almost eighty-six hundred housing units are anticipated over the next thirty years, which represents that average of two hundred and eighty-six new units a year. And similarly, employment growth outlook is expected to be strong at an increase of ten thousand eight hundred jobs. And as I mentioned at the onset of this presentation, following this presentation, we would then dig into the allocations and land needs. So thank you everyone for allowing me to vomit some numbers out today, but happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you Adam. Got lots of numbers there. Works for me because I like numbers. Questions for Adam? On his presentation? Counselor Casimer.
I, I'm not sure if I'm formulating this properly, Mr. Warden, but let me give it a shot. I think during this term of council, this is the third set of projections around population growth, housing demand, et cetera, all associated with the official plan process and, and, you know, trying to help us a plan appropriately. And each of them has shown, you know, shifts with escalations in the, the slope, if you will, of the kinds of growth that we're seeing across the, the many facets that we're looking at. I guess my question is, two years from now, what are the odds that you'll be back with us telling us there's been yet another slope increase or change in, in the forecast? If we were to invite you back for another look, because it, it seems like you know, we seem to be blowing past projections with each set of, of estimates or each new sort of taking of the measurements. And, and you know, I mean, maybe it's tied up in the demographic trends and, and so forth, but I am kind of curious about whether we're going to keep seeing these things and whether in fact, if, if, if you look at these last sort of three sets, if you will, of, of measurements, whether you can take from that, the slope changes on average and project yet another higher version that would happen if we continue to see these kind of adjustments in the, the, the trajectory of the slope and the of the, of the graph, if you will. Sorry, that sounded a little wonky and, and technical, but I'm hoping you sort of understand where I'm coming from. Adam.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And that's extremely valid question. And to be honest, it's been quite a difficult time to be doing this line of work just because of the shift that we've seen. Whether it be COVID or just, you know, an affordability environment or a number of things has really created volatility in the nature of forecasting. And unfortunately, I haven't been doing this for five, ten years, but I do know from my colleagues that in the past, typically we weren't seeing these updates every, every couple of years. As you mentioned, three updates within, you know, two and a half, three years, that's, that's quite a bit. And generally speaking, when we do this, this line of work, we you know, will update the forecast every five to ten years. That's typically what the provincial policy statement recommends is that you, you review this every five years. So it is expected that forecast will become out of step, you know, it's, it's kind of a crystal ball approach. You're doing your best estimate based on the data at the time. But this always does require refinements and, and adjustments. However, you wouldn't hope it's, it's happening every, every two years, right? That's the, the nature of this. So with with this kind of COVID environment settling down, we're, we're really hoping that this isn't the case moving forward. We have had multiple updates in other jurisdictions as well, really trying to, to kind of capture this COVID nuance. But in, in times pre-COVID, that wasn't really the case. So what we're really trying to emphasize these days is the, the value of growth tracking and, and really having accurate, you know, month-to-month or year-to-year monitoring of growth, just to understand whether or not that there needs to be an adjustment made or that, you know, things are on track to that forecast. But yeah, sorry.
Mr. Warden, if I might add supplemental, and, and perhaps this one gets directed to Ms. McMullin. So we leverage these sorts of estimates into planning, official planning and other plans that may come from this master growth plans, that kind of stuff. And I, I know that there's sort of mandates, if you will, from the province saying you need to have this twenty-five-year window for certain planning purposes. I guess I'm questioning at this point whether we steer tightly to these estimates or whether we actually give a little bit of a liberal interpretation of the estimates and we say, okay, either we're going to allocate a little bit less land and, and less to the purposes for the land than, than would be suggested by this. Or maybe we go the other direction and say, well, we're going to allocate a little bit more just to be on the safe side, given the history and experience we've seen of these slopes changing with each, with each reevaluation. So I'm just wondering how, how the, the, the fact that we've seen three different sets of estimates over the term of this council influences the decisions that will be made in the official plan for allocating more land.
So as we get the information and we learn more essentially about growth projections and our land needs assessment. And it, those evaluations. Then they do inform Then they do inform the amount of land that we are, I guess, supposed to. Allocate for future growth. And. The guide guidance from the province is that you do. You lay out what you think or what you've calculated you will need for twenty five years. And there's the reason for that is to allow municipalities to. Coordinate. Other. Aspects of growth like infrastructure planning. Napping roads. Sanitary water, those kinds of parks, those kinds of things. But you can have a sense of where you're going so that as you go there, you're sort of doing a good job of like being prepared. For the next thing and that that you each time you build on it, it's it is part of a sort of a cohesive plan. Where all things are considered a complete community, for instance. There's some flex perhaps to. Allocate less. There's really no flex to allocate more than what you than what your growth projections and land needs assessment gave you. And. I think. It's sort of a two pronged approach from my perspective, and that's what we are intending to put forward in the new official plan is that. Really do need to plan for a good chunk of time. But you can also work hard to take longer to go into it maybe than. Then you project. So we. We will have stronger targets on intensification. And we hope to have tools as well. I mean, our our goal is to to be developing tools and partnerships and collaborations that help us. Help the community, the development community, that folks that own households. To figure out what does higher density look like and what do what does that mean for our neighborhoods? And how can we do that with good design and with sort of. Things working well together. So it is two, two things, in my opinion. One, yeah, it's really important to have a plan for the longer term. And it's really important to look for ways to be the most efficient with what we what we lay out. So I would like to do both things well as a community. And we've all been experiencing quite a period now where there wasn't growth. Locations allocated twenty five years in advance. And it is happening quite piecemeal. And it is extremely difficult to coordinate. It's extremely difficult for the community to to adjust, to understand. And it's pretty hard for the municipalities to. Figure out, you know, what to do next when they're in a reactive position. All the time instead of a proactive position any of the time. And I think we're all sort of. Functioning in that way. And. I also think, you know, my sense from talking to different folks is that. We really want to like get this official plan, you know, like make it make it perfect, make it right. And. And that's maybe why we redid these numbers in two years instead of implementing the first set and then. Doing that refinement after a five year period. But I would like to inject into that conversation that it is meant to be a five year. Renewal each time. And then we're not supposed to go fifteen eighteen years between. When we plan the thing and when we replan a thing or plan again or reap, you know, revise the plan. So what we really want to do is lay out some, you know, a really good fundamental plan that everyone can sort of. See where we're going and get on board with how we get there. And how we can be really efficient in doing that with land. But that we commit together to doing this refinement every five years so that it doesn't feel so overwhelming. The next time we do this, because this time I think is leaving people feeling quite overwhelmed. With these numbers, with the amount of land we may have to look at possibly designating. Because we haven't done it for so long and we haven't had a plan. About where we're growing to, where where are we going to go next? Where's the next subdivision supposed to be that type of thing? And it's put, it's really has put. The municipalities in a in a reactive position instead of a guidance position.
Councilor Will, now I'm going to question.
More comment, I guess. First off, I want to thank Adam for bringing this report. I think it does. Bring the numbers in that council is looking or expecting. Instead of the what you brought on the last report, and that's why council had to redo the numbers. And and this accurately, I think forecasts growth now. Mentioning growth, that's pretty scary because. It's going to take a lot of good planning. To get this growth and protect our agriculture. Perth County is mainly agriculture. And yet, if you're looking at the numbers, you're probably looking at three thousand acres over the next number of years to go out of production. For development. So we have to have good planning and certainly improve density to accommodate both.
Counselor Hurley.
No, I agree as well. It's interesting, too. There's so many uncontrollable realities, I would say. Right now, you go get a mortgage, there's stress tests and you got seven and a half percent. We haven't seen that for twenty years. I believe that's going to put the brakes on a little bit. We'll see if the at the end of the day, we know where the pressures are coming from. Laid it out here, it's from Waterloo in particular. GTA pushes into Waterloo. There's big money flowing into the big cities, how it's happening, where it's happening, we could spend all day, it's irrelevant. That's what's kicking up back up the land. And here we are. Seven and a half percent interest. I see houses sitting now for a few days, a few weeks, not moving. So I I don't know. We don't know where this is going to go. I believe a conservative approach on what land we allocate in. It it's, these are great numbers for sure. We got to start going up, though. That is the reality in these bigger centers. The bigger cities, the bigger centers is where the development has to happen, and we got to go up. There's endless baby boomers in their homes. Let's encourage them to shift into a, you know. A smaller living and then that opens up for families, I believe. Again, just plowing over endless land and more and more and all these numbers might be more. It's such pressure. It's the roads is the big thing. Massive accident again down a punky dude's corner. My phone's off the hook. I I might as well say daily at this point. With traffic concerns. Highways are looming eighty six highway. I hear complaints up there, you know, are we going to include passing lanes and such? This is a huge undertaking. It's just not a matter of taking some land and putting more houses. I it's it's a lot. So wherever this development happens, we have to make sure people can get in and out and. And try and preserve some of our rural ability to do business. It's a plague. Thanks.
Other Sally?
Just looking at just some really rough math. I just wanted to provide a bit of context. And this is just looking at. Residential based on the information that Adam's been able to to give to us today. So. You know, looking at. Densities that we aim to achieve with new residential developments. Recognizing there's going to be a distribution between low, medium and high. But certainly aiming for a greater density than we've seen over the past ten years per hectare, greater number of units per hectare. That we're, you know, from a residential perspective, we're probably more in, you know, in the neighborhood of ten percent of three thousand and I. I would like. It, you know. People are probably feeling concerned about. Uh, growth and the amount of growth because agriculture is such a critical and important part of our heritage and our. Economy here in Perth County. That. It's important to give people. The information that, yeah, we have two competing land uses here. Agriculture is, we have prime ag land here. It's not just run of the mill. Ag land and we also have a lot of growth. We're going to have to figure out how to manage both. But I don't think we should give numbers to the. To the to out there for fodder that are going to, you know, people are already feeling overwhelmed. And so let's try and be a little careful about the. The numbers that we know and the numbers that we don't know yet. But I I do think from a residential perspective. It's not three thousand. It's maybe ten percent of that or less.
Counselor, right?
So I I was the only one who asked a question about why we just did all those estate lots that were a third of an area. The next presentation from Adam is. We we need more density. And then from Sally is we need more density. We just passed some huge housing lots because they're not in the official plan. So the elephant in the room there is we just did something. What I would consider bad. And now we just have somebody telling us we have to totally change the way we think. That's just my perspective on this. The last two functions we just did, how they conflict each other in planning. Right? We we give big lots and then the next thing we say is we got to have higher density. So that's where I get confused on our planning issues in Perth County. Thank you.
Sally?
Yes, thank you for that. You're right. And it it doesn't. Feel like it makes sense. And what what we are, what we're dealing with as a group, like we being you. Us, like the planning department councils across the county and and developers and the folks who live here and work here is that. We don't have the policies in our official plan currently. To set those parameters for staff and give council. More ability to implement them with their decision making. And so. Like we haven't planned for where those areas will be on the ground. We also don't have those policies in place to help us curb it and. Sort of be more forceful or more clear about intensification and densities. So we're operating both in this world where we're trying to plan a better way. And get it done and put it into practice at the same time that we're experiencing. A high level of demand. In and we have to evaluate those on the policies that we have in place right now. So it it really is, I don't know, maybe a catch twenty two or it but it's it's. Is hard to figure out and it's hard to find the time to do both. And that's been the struggle is to get this official plan in place so we can. Do as a community a different way, more intensification. Better like do density, but do it well. And have those policies. In place rather than the approach that we're taking currently, which is. To, you know, we're receiving these applications and. We spend time talking with each developer about, you know. Mister, Miss Developer, what do you think you can do on this development with respect to density? What do you think you can do with respect to affordability? And trying to urge or persuade or or get to a place where those are happening and. And it does sometimes, but it doesn't other times. And. I think planning staff and council feel like like we need those policies.
Other comments or questions?
Well, you know me, I got to make a couple of comments. So just listen to all the comments. Maybe they're all good comments. And one of the comments, well, you know, the development has to go more to the bigger centers. Well, guess what? I don't care whether you're developing around the edge of Toronto, the edge of Kitchener, the edge of London. Or the edge of Supremal. If you're developing, you're still using farmland. They're not building those homes in the air. Number two, I want to thank Adam for these numbers that we just bought. We all presumed the numbers were going to change. But I honestly believe that everybody here is surprised that they changed that much in two years. I'd be shocked if you didn't think that they were going to be lower than that. And we may want to come up with the perfect plan for our official plan. I have never seen a plan yet. That didn't have to change at some point in time because of circumstances that you didn't realize were going to happen to you. And I'm going to make back to a comment counselor here like maybe there's stress tests and the seven and a half percent. I bought my first house at a twenty two percent park tree. You think seven and a half is a good news for you? Anyway. But we've had more things and COVID changed these numbers dramatically. But now we've got other things that are happening. But we really don't have a lot of control. And I'm going to use the Russian Ukraine war. It's jumped the price of fuels substantially. We've now got inflation because we were handing out too much money before. And now we're going to have higher interest rates, like seven and a half is going to be nothing here in a couple, three months, zero. So those, all those factors are going to change. These numbers, whether we think they are or not. So we're just going to have to keep adjusting as we go along here. Nothing's going to be cut and stone. We're just going to make the best estimates and we've got them from Watson and Associates. To move forward, but there will have to be changes as we go. That's just my comments.
Counselor. If I just may finish up there to kind of trump in, when when I made the comments on building up against our our existing cities. With infrastructure is the key. They have social services. They have, they have cat services. They have city buses. And the idea is is to keep people living where they work so they don't have to play guard road roads. That is what I was getting at when I made those comments. That's fine. In my mind, it's good business. Of course, it's taken land. I understand that. But that's keep it bumped up against our big cities already because as we go out in the world, it forces more depends on people. And forces them on the road and it's just that a cost.
Anybody else got any comments or questions before we're done here? Not seeing any. That was a very interesting report. I got to go back and through and read back some of the numbers in my mind. Anyway, council, I have a motion here, County Council receives the update on municipal comprehensive review slash Watson and Associates report. And that County Council received a presentation from Watson and Associates regarding growth projections and next steps. By Councilor Ken, seconded by Councilor Welton. Last chance for comments or questions. Those in favor? That is carried. Well, thank you very much. Adam, that was great.
Thank you, everyone. Traveling me.
Okay, we're going to move on. And next is the new official plan project update. We're going from official plan numbers to official plan update. Sally, I believe you're going to do that.
Yes, thank you, Warden. This is again, something that I'm trying to do at least on a quarterly basis is give council a sense of what actions. What activities are underway or have been finished on the official plan as we keep rolling through the various pieces. To put this together. So. During sort of the last quarter, I've summarized some of the things that have been occurring for you. We worked with council to get. A final. Strategy together for natural environment consultation and that launched last week with letters going out to twenty eight hundred. Approximately landowners and we're working. We're receiving those calls now and working through them with individual landowners, their questions, their comments. Their concerns, their interests. And there's a, there's a good diversity there. It's it's great. It's great conversation on both sides and and. So far, it's going well. We have. Come to. A place where we've gotten through, I think, I think I have. Well, there's a handful left, but the review of. Over seven hundred site specific circumstances that are currently in the official plan through all its two hundred and ten ish, two hundred and. Five ish amendments, fringe policies where development has occurred. And special policies where development has occurred. Outs, you know, outside of a regular provision within the official plan. So. We're also working on. The growth plan and part of that is getting these new numbers from Watson and Associates. And being trying to be prepared for. What that looks like on a map when the land needs assessment is completed. So we had. Sort of put together a proposal. Back in the spring that we were sort of using as our working, working model, working proposal and certainly. Back in the spring that we were sort of using as our working, working model, working proposal and certainly. Had anticipated some in additional properties that we would have to consider. Think, you know, assuming that those numbers would be higher and they certainly are. And in doing that, we're also trying to map all of the constraints. So that council can kind of see how it comes together and how the proposal is built. And it builds on the, it builds on the workshops that we did back in late twenty twenty and early twenty twenty with each, with each council where. You look at. All the areas around your serviced areas and then you try to layer on top of that, you know, where is servicing sort of most easy or most economical to try and. Build. And then you look at what are the other important constraints, source water protection areas, flood plains, natural environment and. And agricultural businesses and agricultural operations. And we would like to to show you that on maps so that you can sort of see how the layers come together and then the map really shows you. What the plan could be and what the proposal can be, so. That's what we're doing now. We've, we've put a fair bit of effort into doing MDS calculations for livestock facilities within. One and a half kilometers of the service settlement areas in order to be, you know, really diligent about. Knowing what those, you know, what those circles look like for those, for those operations. And using that as part of the information that we will. Like, bring all together to figure out what those growth plans, growth areas look like, so that's been underway. We are, we're anticipating or try, you know, we're aiming to resurrect, I would say, the committees that work on, that have been struck for reviewing this draft. Official plan and with particular focus sort of on the stakeholder committee and and wanting to ensure that it has sort of the best. Balance across the different perspectives that that could exist in Perth County and so we've been. Trying to confirm, you know, the existing members on that group. If they're still engaged, if they're still in the same role that they were before. And then looking, and we did a call for new members, so we're looking to add to that. And we're, we're getting close to being able to finalize that group and let people know where we're at and what, what we're. Looking forward to in terms of like the number of meetings and the commitment that that might take. And we're also looking to. Bring the official plan to these groups and eventually to the public in sort of theme areas. So that it's a little easier to go through the material and digest it all and and be able to think about it and and have conversations about it, so. That's the kind of things that Stephanie and I have been working on and that we're going to be getting into working on. This week and certainly the next few weeks, almost all of the resources for the official plan are going into the natural environment consultation as. Folks have just received those letters. And. We will be moving from that into. The materials and scheduling of meetings for the committees and the committees, as just as a reminder, is the the steering committee, which is. CIO and mayors. And the warden. And then the technical committee, which is a number of ministry and conservation authority personnel from different perspectives. And then. The housing committee would. To review. The plan and in particular, the neighborhood provisions and intensification provisions and density. And then also this stakeholder group that I mentioned. So again, I want to be regular with updating council and giving you a sense of what's going on. Both sort of since I told you last and what we're going into and I want to do that roughly each quarter, so. It was nice today to be able to do that with Adam's presentation so that we could. You know, show you how those two things relate as well and the timing of things, so. I'll leave it there if council has any questions.
Thanks, Sally. Questions for Sally? Comments? You, Counselor McDermott?
Are we still planning to do some public forums, like when people can come? For both natural heritage and the official plan?
Yes, absolutely. Not only is it a statutory requirement, but it's just. It's just a critical, important piece and and so we're starting with these, you know, landowner. Direct consultations on natural environment and then. Moving from there to the committee work and once we have reviewed the draft official plan with each of those four committees. Then from there, we'll do any necessary editing. And that's the point at which we'll go into a public consultation with the public in general and. And in that, there will be consultation for the public on all of the different aspects of the. Official plan, so growth, agriculture policies, neighborhood policies, natural environment policies, all of those things and the mapping. So that is the goal, is to get us through this period of evaluating the draft, finalizing the draft and then. Taking that draft out to the public for consultation and we were. We're really. Sort of building our. Maybe skills, maybe. Tools, like different. Different online platforms, different techniques for in-person meetings to try and really. Bring a public consultation that's interactive, so. We've talked about that a little bit in the past here at council, but yeah, we want to do, you know, webinars in person. We want to do. Online forums and that kind of thing, like to to try and get. Both formats and subject areas that are varied. So that the public can have different opportunities and different ways of engaging on the official plan.
Most of that would be probably into next year, I would think, like next spring possibly.
Yes.
So that kind of like the timeframe we're looking at.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I know the letters are out because I've got phone calls. Ironically, three or four of the people that phoned me were quite happy with the due design, due designations. They were getting less restriction and more agglom. But I have also had people. And one being a fellow Purcell's counselor that tried to go on the website and they were walking through the instructions to get there to see what the changes were. And the first time she did it, it said the site didn't exist. And then we tried it again at Purcell's Council on Tuesday night and then we find, you helped her finally get through. But I think there are a few people struggling. Getting onto that site, just to check out what's going on. If you want to elaborate on that, Councilor Welton?
Yes, it does take a little bit of work to get through it and I don't know if you can clear it up or not, but it is there and it's very good to. Able to review your own property, so. You're just gonna have to be patient and try different things or contact somebody for some help.
Counselor Hurley?
No, I as well, I'm getting lots of feedback. I'll say this, you're not councillor of North, you're still not such a good outcome. There's lots of designated land and people are a little concerned, that's for sure, but they have got their letters, so. I'm suspecting that's gonna put some pressure on planning, but. Our due diligence has been done and I think planning and council. It was a righteous and the right thing to do to let people know. And we've done that. Thank you.
Like I said before, we're only gonna do this once. We want to do it right the first time. We're not wasting their money. Okay, no more of the comments or questions? Ocean County Council receives a new official plan project report. Counselor McDermott, second to Counselor Casper. Those in favor? That's carried. Now we're gonna move on to seven point one point six. Official plan amendment two oh six and then once we get through that portion before we start the next parts, we'll take a ten minute break and we'll finish up. The the planning portion. So, Susanna, she's coming back. There's Susanna. And we're ready for the OPA.
Super. I will share my screen. And can you see my screen and my cursor moving now?
Yeah.
Okay, so Perth County OPA two oh six is an official plan amendment for a property in Listwell. The red star shows the location of the site. It's on Mitchell Road South. Here is an air photo provided by the applicant, so Pierre Chauvin was speaking to this file earlier this morning. He is the consultant working on this file and the applicant is a numbered company care of Nizer Mawani. Here is an air photo provided by MHBC, so the property is outlined with a purple dash line here. It's a four point six acre property fronting Mitchell Road South. Between Kincaid Street to the north and Twanley Street to the south. It's immediately across the road from LCPO, theirs and Walmart and it's south of the Pioneer Gas Bar property. Here is the designation in the Perth County official plan and the red star shows the location of the subject property. It's a urban fringe special policy in the Perth County official plan. And the policy for this site is on the screen now. It limits the use to commercial uses. The applicant is requesting an official plan amendment to change the designation on the property. To permit a mixed-use site, so residential and commercial. And I'll walk through the planning considerations for this site. So first of all, there is a consideration with regards to reducing the commercial land. North Perth has done considerable work with regards to projecting the amount of commercial land needed in Listwell. In two thousand and eighteen, there was a study prepared by Altus Group, which is a team of land economists. And they have projected the need for commercial GFA. In Listwell being. Two hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet in twenty twenty and four hundred and forty-six thousand square feet in twenty thirty-one, which represents forty-one acres. So the planning department has done a high-level review to determine how close the existing land. That's designated for commercial purposes in the Listwell area is available and in our review. There's between two hundred and fifty-four thousand square feet and four hundred and thirty-four thousand square feet. And this has been flagged to be reviewed at the time of, with the official plan update as well. So the second consideration, aside from area of land available for commercial development. Is the location of the subject property. The map on the screen now is from the two thousand and eighteen Altus Group report. And it shows the three commercial areas in Listwell. So the downtown area of Listwell, the north fringe along Walles Avenue North. And then the the location on Mitchell Avenue South, where where the subject property is located is referred to as the nickel property. So, the the reason for putting this slide on the screen is to emphasize the significance. Of having commercial frontage on Mitchell Road South. As identified with the two thousand and eighteen Altus Group study and reiterated with the peer review. Of OPA two oh six completed by the Altus Group. This is the site's plan that has been submitted by MHBC for the. Property and I don't want to overemphasize the site because the specific details of the site are not being considered by OPA two oh six. The purpose of OPA two oh six is is to determine if it's appropriate to have a mixed-use site, residential and. Commercial on the subject property as opposed to just commercial. And because. The, we do have this information available, I'm providing it to council for discussion purposes and information purposes. To show you that the applicant is proposing to have commercial with this drawing. The applicant is designing the site. To show that there would be a commercial uses fronting Mitchell Road South, so Mitchell Road South is on the the bottom part of the screen. And Twanley, or sorry, Kincaid Street is to the north. So the north, north of the property is this way and Twanley Street is to the south. So this shows that the developer is proposing to have. Commercial land or commercial development on Mitchell Road South. And then as Pierre Chauvin spoke to earlier, there are approximately, you know, just shy of two hundred. Apartments proposed into six-story apartment buildings on this, in this version of the development. So the planning consideration then is with regards to maintaining a commercial corridor on Mitchell Road South. As is anticipated or or shown with the Altus Group's work in two thousand and eighteen. What we're, what the planning consideration is to ensure that there is commercial development on Mitchell Road South. So the original OPA is drafted by the planning department. Required or included a policy that the zoning bylaw may not permit residential development prior to the establishment of a commercial use. The developer is clear that his intention is to build the housing first. And as such, he found, he finds this policy proposed by the planning department restrictive to his proposal. MHBC then has revised the policy. To allow a development to occur through a site plan. That shows the commercial uses on the site plan and that that is adequate. To proceed then with the residential development prior to the commercial development on the site. This has been reviewed with North Perth Council earlier this week at their council meeting on October seventeenth. And County Council has. It prefers the option that's proposed by MHBC, which. Sorry, did I say North Perth Council? North Perth Council prefers the option proposed by MHBC. To allow, to show the commercial development. On the site plan and allow the residential development to continue first. So that revised OPA is provided to council this morning and the department is supportive of this approach. Then the second planning consideration is with regards to affordable housing targets. So the developer is proposing, as Pierre Chauvin mentioned earlier today, that fifteen percent of the housing will be affordable according to the CMHC definition. And there is a policy included in OPA two oh six that speaks to this target. Then, the next planning consideration is with regards to density and design. The OPA two oh six, as requested by the applicant, has a minimum density of thirty units per hectare. A maximum density of ninety-eight units per hectare and this is what the earlier site plan that I showed you. Shows with the two six-story apartment buildings is just shy of ninety-eight units per hectare. That's the density. Proposed and North Perth Council at their meeting on October seventeenth. Has recommended that the minimum density be increased from thirty units per hectare to ninety-eight. Units per hectare, sorry, so the increases for the, the minimum density, change that from thirty to seventy. And then the second consideration here, I I wanted to highlight is that an urban design brief is required at the site plan stage. And that is included in OPA two oh six. The significant thing I I just, I would like to highlight is that. Design is is extremely important when considering higher, higher density residential developments. And that is then incorporated into OPA two oh six. Then finally, traffic was a consideration that was discussed at the public meeting. And we have had really good meetings with the North Perth Traffic Engineer. And who has advised that it's possible to address the road system access for the development and that. The proposed used as determined by OPA two oh six is required prior to the traffic impact study, even that the final work on that. So that concludes the review of the planning department's comments. The staff recommendation is to approve OPA two oh six with the two changes recommended by North Perth Council earlier this week. And I also would highlight that I believe County Council received correspondence from a developer on. Who's proposing a mixed-use site on the south side of Twanley in your package today. Those are all my comments.
Thank you, Susanna. Questions or comments on this official?
Thank you, Susanna. Questions or comments on this official appointment? For Deputy Warden, I guess.
I just have one question. So the areas that were close by here, we talked at one of the last council meetings and they were going to put apartments or something above the commercial. Is there anything like that going to happen here? Or is there not enough parking to do that as well?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I believe that the 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 site plan will be finalized following the approval of OPA 206. And I believe the current design doesn't include apartments above the commercial units. And if Mr. Chauvin is able to speak to that question, he might be able to answer more in more detailed way.
Okay, the fact of the matter remains though, the minimum density has gone from 30 to 70, right?
That's the minimum density as as recommended by North Perth Council. However, that maximum density is 98 units per hectare and the design that I showed you earlier today or earlier is has a density of just shy of 98 units per hectare. So that's the intention of the developer.
I realize that, but sat here and talked about safe farmland, trying to build upward. So, you know, it can be accommodated. It would be great that they can put more living spaces there. I realize there might be a problem with the parking though, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Other comments or questions? Don't say any last comment there. Here I see we're back back on the screen here.
If I may, I can add to that last comment, Mr. Warden.
Go for it.
Yeah, the current site plan as we have today does not have mixed use buildings. The policy is you you have before you allows for that. But it also allows for mixed use buildings as well. So the option is there. But you're absolutely right. The parking is a limitation on this site. Short of going underground, which is challenging on the site because of the high groundwater table. We are really limited to surface parking on the site. And that really does limit the kind of density that we can achieve. And I think we are pretty high here, probably the highest in North Perth. I think it's still appropriate. And as Susanna indicated, we're going to have a high level of design with respect to the site and will be required to do an urban design brief and to deal with the height and mass and trying to mitigate that through materials and articulation in the buildings, et cetera, et cetera. So yeah, the the intent is to not, you know, have the flexibility, so to speak, to either have mixed use buildings or just a mixed use site.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Not sitting. I got just a quick one. So we just had a report from Adam Fisher with regards to changes in, you know, estimates and growth, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And one of the things in this report was a commercial needs study. It was from 2018. So my only comment, I have no problem with SOP. You don't get me wrong. But I'm going to say that right now perhaps a commercial site might be more of a liability than than an asset. There'd be a lot of shopping malls that are pretty well empty. COVID changed everybody to online shopping, including me. And I could get it delivered to my house cheaper without ever leaving the computer. And I can go into a commercial store to buy some. So I think that's something we need to maybe look at down the road here as well. Susanna?
Yeah, I really appreciate that comment, Mr. Warden. The planning or North Perth had engaged the Altus Group to peer review OPA 206 in order to advise whether or not the 2018 projections were, you know, had changed. And that that review was provided with the earlier council package. And their their in their review, the need for commercial land hasn't changed. So that was prepared in spring of this year, I think June.
Okay. Anyway, I have a motion here. There's no other comments or questions. County Council receives the official plan amendment 206 for a mixed use development on part of Lot 30. Concession one, Elmer Ward, municipality of North Perth report and the county council approve official plan amendment number 206 for a mixed use development on part of Lot 30 concession one, Elmer Ward, municipality of North Perth. Councillor Casenberg moves, Councillor Callum seconds. Any comments or questions? Last chance. Those in favor? That's good. So that's the end of planning session. So before we go to 7.2, we're going to take a 10 minute break. Okay, we're going to call this meeting back to order and then I gotta wait for Sean down there to give you the thumbs up again. We're good? Perfect. So now, get in your chair. Okay, next thing on the agenda on 7.2 is employee code of conduct. Annette, you're doing that?
So Crystal will, Crystal will present. And if there's questions, she and I will tag you.
Okay, yep.
Great. Good morning. Good morning.
You've met most of the people here?
No, not everyone yet.
Okay, so for those who haven't had the pleasure, this is Crystal, our HR assistant. And you've been with us since
Since June.
June, yeah. Carrie.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Warden and members of council. As Warden Herson just said, my name is Crystal Holmes. I'm the HR Generalist here with the county. I started in June, previous to my role here. I worked at Strachan Festival for 15 seasons and most of that time in the HR department. The report before you pertains to the employee code of conduct, which was last updated in 2010. The code needed a refresh and we're asking council to endorse the updated employee code of conduct. The update is a housekeeping item and to complete this, we benchmark seven different municipalities, developed a group, a focus group comprised of employees across multiple divisions. This benchmark review allowed for us to see what other municipalities have in place and the employee focus group allowed for us to receive employee feedback and perception throughout the process. This code update will assist with our efforts to increase corporate culture. And I'd just like to highlight some changes to the code. This, we added information on corporate values, honesty, integrity, diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility. Clarifying gifts and benefits, updating confidentiality to include cybersecurity. Adding expectations related to personal conduct and social media, referencing opportunities to promote the county of Perth and adding direction for additional information and how to report a violation. The revised employee code of conduct would apply to all Perth County employees, including union and non-union staff. Members of council have a separate code of conduct, which Annette will speak to later this morning. The revised employee code of conduct upon approval will take effect immediately and will be launched as follows. An email communication to all staff, an announcement and posting on Perth County's internal network and presenting to both union and non-union staff. Which include distribution of the resources and a question and answer session. I would like to thank each of you for your time this morning and I welcome any of you.
Thank you, Crystal. Questions for either Crystal or Annette on the report? For employee code of conduct. Councillor McDermott.
Just on page 110, the talk's about the social media and that type of thing. So as long as you're not on social media at work, but before work and after work. As long as you don't put anything about the county or the people you work with. That's the only, that's the only thing that you're concerned about. So if they put anything else on social media or like anything or whatever, that's their private business or their private time, right?
Through the warden, we would just want to ensure that people aren't promoting or putting disparaging comments about the county and working for the county or both the county.
Yeah, so as long as they don't say anything about the county or the people they work with, whatever else they do on social media is their business. Yeah, okay.
Other comments or questions? I think at one time that was a little bit of an issue, but that's disappeared. No comments or questions? Did a good job in the report then, Chris, there's not many questions. Council receives, I have a motion here, council receives the employee code of conduct policy report. And that council repealed policy CL dash 4.03 code of conduct slash accountability and transparency and transparency. And that council adopt policy 111-11 HR employee code of conduct, which is what you've just seen before to hear now. Wait, we're moving to second here. Councillor McDermott, Councillor Wellhough. Last chance for comments or questions. Those in favor, Carrie, moving on. Okay, and the next one is the council and staff relations policy report. And Crystal, you're doing that one? Or Annette?
This one's me.
Or you're both?
We're we're divided. This report introduces a new council and staff relations policy, which is a requirement under the municipal act. So the purpose of this policy is to promote a framework or to provide a framework that promotes mutual respect between members of council and staff. So it's applicable to not only council but also to staff. There is a statement of principles and the statement of principles recognizes that positive internal relations are central to providing good governance and to instilling public confidence. It states that members and staff shall relate to one another in a respectful, professional and courteous manner. Each shall respect each other's roles and members and staff shall work together to serve the public good. So these statements are further enunciated and clarified in the policy and a few specifics as they relate to council. Council as a whole is the governing body and staff shall serve council as a whole. Members will respect the administrative and managerial chain of command. Requests for writing to staff for information that are not received at a meeting shall be in writing and this serves to 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 not only protect the counselors because you know what has been asked and there's a record of your request, but also to the staff because they have something in writing which clearly outlines the information that you were seeking. Another section to note is that if an action or position of staff is being questioned or even potentially criticized at a public meeting, members should notify the staff to allow them time to prepare an informed and helpful response. So if you know that you're going to be questioning an aspect of a report, let staff know so that they can come with a response, something that is researched, that is beneficial to you because it's about informed decision making. The purpose of staff is to provide you with information to allow you to make a decision. The policy addresses access to records. It aligns with the right to disconnect policy as well as staff's statutory duties. The roles and responsibilities of staff are also outlined in this policy. And again, it's to ensure that council's decision and policymaking is respected and supported with information, research and evidence. Some of the requirements on staff include that staff should not be involved in policy and decision making processes aside from providing you with the information that you need to make the decision. They should not speak publicly on any matter without authorization to do so. And they should not publicly criticize any decision or action of council or of any member. So looking at this policy in terms of how it was created, it was created in consultation with the Integrity Commissioner. A review of precedent documents, it was benchmarked against other municipalities and feedback was gathered from council, it was circulated last December as well as employees. So on that note, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have with regards to this policy.
Annette? Questions for Annette, Councillor McDermott?
On page 118, it's about no greater access to records or information held by the county. Does that, I understand that means for somebody else, but can I access every bit of information that you have on me at the county?
You would have to go through through the warden. You would have to go through and accept that as well.
Okay.
Councillor Casberg, did you have your hand up there before?
I did just a quick query. There is some information in terms of I think it's on page 119 of our package subsection K of 6.1 where it speaks to staff not speaking publicly on any matter. I can imagine circumstances certainly where the media would approach the staff of the county, the CAO's office in particular, and ask for comment on something. And I wonder if that covenant in in item K is perhaps a little more restrictive than would be intended in terms of staff giving an answer to the media about, you know, something factual that happened at county council.
Well, I'm gonna already Annette answered that, but when I read that, to me, that means like, step like reporters phone up time after meeting and ask for their comments. What this refers to is they cannot publicly criticize any decision. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Through the warden, so it's it's about not criticizing them, but it's also that we have the sentence in there about without authorization to do so. So there's many times where the public may call and perhaps, you know, it's something for roads and and John would be authorized to speak on that. Or if it's an emergency, we have an emergency manager, information officer, they would be authorized to speak on that. So it's just wanting to make sure that everybody is not speaking to something, that there is a proper authorization format or framework available to staff if we're going to. Sometimes we get calls and we will speak to the warden and the warden will authorize us to speak to something if they're looking for that. Does that help or did you want that re-narrated?
I I the the purpose of asking the question is to, I suppose now inquire about where that authorization comes from. And and you know, you you mentioned in your last comment, the the last sentence there, CEO Wolf, that you will check in with the warden, which makes sense about some things, but you know, routine stuff and and stuff that happens in emergencies and stuff, I would expect that that staff can act within the purview of of their department, their responsibility. I'm just querying that council has enabled that at some point and doesn't need to enable that case by case by case, because that would be certainly a nuisance.
Through the warden, yes, you are correct on that. It's within the, it's within our position authorities and certainly in some of our frameworks, it will say specifically who will be the public spokesperson, such as an emergency management. But that that is correct.
Other questions or comments? Okay, I have a motion. Council receives council and staff relations policy report. And that council adopt policy 1CL/1.08 council and staff relations policy moved by Councillor Wellhough, seconded by Councillor Duncan. Those in favor? Let's carry. Moving on. Annette?
All right, next.
Also code of conduct and complaint protocol.
Thank you, Warden. Next up, staff have prepared an updated code of conduct for council. The current code of conduct is dated May 2016 and 2016 and requires updating to bring it in line with amendments to the municipal act and to modernize it. and twenty sixteen and requires updating to bring it in line with amendments to the municipal act and to modernize it. To create this draft, staff worked together with the integrity commissioner. Staff engaged in a review and comparison of each of the lower tiers, their codes of conduct to best inform this proposed draft. As well as staff circulated this to council for feedback and commentary. The updated code more clearly defines the scope, rules and responsibilities of council members. Processes and the responsibilities of the integrity commissioner. By way of an overview. The purpose of this code is to establish a common basis for acceptable conduct. It incorporates again a statement of principles that sets out that the code is intended to set out a high standard of conduct for good governance and public confidence. The code includes general obligations, respect for staff. An outline of being a custodian of custody asset, county assets and what that means. How to handle gifts, benefits and hospitality as well as disclosure requirements. And the code also addresses confidentiality, discrimination and harassment, improper use of influence. Conflicts of interest, election activity, communications and media relations, as well as the use of social media. It outlines the penalties for non-compliance and the appropriate remedial or corrective actions. So the report to the council, within the report, you'll see the areas of change that are listed from the twenty sixteen code to the revised draft. And you'll also see an outline of the feedback that was received from council, which led to further revisions. Again, those are outlined in the report. The report, the revised code also includes a complaint protocol, which is appendix B. And there are two procedures within appendix B, an informal and formal procedure. So I can appreciate that some of this is complex and what we've attempted to do is create a, a visual to map this out. Um, on that note, I will ask Sean to put up the diagram, it's a flow chart. And the idea behind this flow chart is that it clarifies the processes. And we will, if this, if the revisions, the revised code is passed. We will create, formalize this as a resource and a tool for charting what happens in the event that there is an alleged contravention of, of the code. So what you will see, and I appreciate that it's quite small, so Sean, if you can increase the view. You'll see that it starts with an alleged behavior, contributing to behavior or activity. And there's two processes that can be followed. The first is an informal complaint procedure. And this is simply where the complainant speaks directly to the member about the conduct that they've witnessed. It may be resolved at that point in time. If it is not, then the complainant can move to the formal complaint procedure. They can move to the formal complaint procedure at any point in time, they're not precluded from doing that if they choose to go the informal route. Once the complaint goes into the formal complaint procedure, it's received by the integrity commissioner. And there's a few different ways, it can be handed to the clerk or it can be, or the complaint can go directly to the integrity commissioner. Um, council may pass the resolution. For an investigation and a person of interest may bring forward a complaint under the municipal conflict of interest act. So it moves over to the integrity commissioner, the integrity commissioner needs to make a determination within a timely matter whether or not the complaint is within the code of conduct. If it is within the code of conduct, uh, Sean, if you can scroll up. Thank you. The integrity commissioner has three choices of, of action. One, they can refuse to investigate the conduct. So this would be if it is frivolous, if it is vexatious. Um, they can say at any point in time, we're not going to investigate this any further. So it may be that the initial complaint has some merit, but when they speak to witnesses, they find out that no, there is no merit to this. So it's at any point in time, they can say, we're not going to investigate any further. They can also um, determine whether or not there's an opportunity to resolve this. So maybe it doesn't have to be a formal report to council, but rather speaking with the member and the complainant directly. Otherwise, they can investigate, so the integrity commissioner will reach out to the member and use to respond within ten days. The integrity commissioner will then provide that response to the complainant, again, another ten days. And then they will conduct a full investigation. This entire time period from the date in which flip back to the beginning, the formal complaint procedure uh, is limited to a time period of ninety days, which is shortened from what the previous code of conduct contained. However, there is a discretion for the integrity commissioner to abridge or extend that time period, so they can shorten it or they can extend it if need be. So, as I mentioned, um, if this is helpful and you choose to adopt this code, we will use this flow chart as a tool to, for training and for council to help to uh, lay out a visual related to the code of conduct and the complaint protocol. Um, as I mentioned, we did receive feedback from council, there were two issues which uh, arose for council's consideration. One was the integrity commissioner's authority to abridge or extend the time period. Um, and the concern that the discretion of the integrity commissioner, given to the integrity commissioner may be considered overreaching. I do just want to draw your attention to those two points that you may choose to discuss. So the draft as it is presented was shared with and approved by the integrity commissioner. And our integrity commissioner will be on hand on April thirteenth to provide a more fulsome overview of the code of conduct and the various provisions as part of new council orientation. And again, as I mentioned, we can take this slide and turn it into a quick reference tool to make sure that the process is clear to everyone. So if you have any questions, if you have any comments, any feedbacks, I invite it now, it is your code of conduct, it can be revised. Um, we can make changes to it, we can work together, we can have a discussion about it.
Okay, thanks, Annette. So if we can stop share, screen sharing, now I can see again. Questions or comments on this report? Counsel Casper.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Diamond and and Ward Naturist, and thank you for the floor. Um, I, I think this is a remarkable improvement over documentation and and lack of process that essentially existed uh, prior to this point as a result of uh, uh, bylaw actions of a previous council that quashed certain procedural matters. Uh, associated with the current code of conduct. So I'm, I'm quite delighted actually uh, with the, the scope and comprehensiveness of, of this document and I feel that it represents uh, as I said, significant strides forward. Um, there are a few matters that I, I would wish to attend to, uh, most of them are in the process section. So I will address uh, those uh, briefly if you don't mind. Uh, first on page one seventy-five, uh, under section six point one subsection two. Uh, there's a reference generally in that um, paragraph to timely manner. And um, they haven't defined what that means. Uh, this is associated with the integrity commissioner um, looking over the complaint that is received and determining how to classify it. Um, I assume that this all sits within the ninety day procedural window uh, that is now proposed in this uh, code of conduct procedure. Uh, but I think that um, some clarification, because the word timely manner could, could mean anything. And um, I'm hoping that what that means is that from intake of a complaint to response uh, either to the, the uh, member or, or uh, to the complainant. That there's probably about ten days, because if the integrity commissioner uh, seeks ten day turnover time from a member. Uh, then they should have ten day turnover time from the complainant submitting their documentation in the proper fashion. So that's six point one point two in the process on page one seventy-five. On page one eighty, under uh, fourteen point one. Uh, there are words like in its sole discretion and public interest and those leave me somewhat uncomfortable. Um, I'm not convinced that that's the, the right way to proceed. Um, but uh, I would, you know, certainly defer to uh, further instruction or guidance on what that means. Finally, on page one eighty-one, so just three points, warden. Um, under section fifteen point one. Um, there is this notion that, and and uh, Ms. Diamond referred to it. That um, the integrity commissioner may wish to extend past ninety days for an investigation. And um, the way it's presented is that the integrity commissioner would provide notice. Um, I'm uncomfortable with that one. I think that in fact, what needs to happen is that consent of council is needed to extend beyond ninety days, uh, even through an interim report from the integrity commissioner to that end. Um, and I'm uncomfortable with it because I can see it being abused. I'm not accusing any uh, uh, integrity commissioner in the province of Ontario um, uh, with intent of abuse of that, but the notion that uh, um, their, their office is busy and they need to extend um, the investigation uh, doesn't sit well with me and, and to leave it um, to them providing notice of that uh, to me is unacceptable. So I would ask that council and and staff look at that one in particular. Uh, because I think that um, you know, if, if they're going to extend the investigation beyond the ninety day statutory period that we're recommending in this code. Um, that um, they should seek council's consent, they should give an interim report ahead of the ninety days indicating what kind of trouble they're having with the investigation that warrants an extension past the ninety days. Those are my comments.
Yep, I'll let you respond to those, if you don't mind.
So we certainly can amend um, paragraph six point two to define timely manner as ten days. And I think that we would just need an amendment to the, the resolution or um, to do that. In terms of the consent of council to extend beyond ninety days, I put that out to council for discussion. Um, it, it is, the ninety days is shorter than the previous code of conduct, which was six months. So ninety days, you're giving a relatively short period of time. There are circumstances where the integrity commissioner may not be able to um, meet that ninety day turnaround, whether or not it's an uncooperative witness or, you know, circumstances of, of being short-staffed or COVID, whatever excuse. So I do put that out to council, it's a provision that we can amend. It's open for discussion if you want to amend it.
Counsel's wishes? Counsel Casper?
Uh, Mr. Warden, I think I've suggested perhaps a reasonable approach to this, which is that if the integrity commissioner needs more than ninety days. That uh, at a council meeting, uh, be, before the ninety day period, they present to council um, a request and an update on their investigation in a complaint. It doesn't necessarily have to be detailed in terms of um, of the member who is under investigation. Um, and because the integrity commissioner may not wish to reveal that at that point in time. But I do think that um, presenting to council that there is an active complaint that is requiring more than ninety days and seeks council consent for that extension is, is reasonable and fair.
Uh, comments from council?
Counsel Laura? That would trigger festering potentially of a known issue then it's in the rumblings then of staff and, and council, would that potentially affect something? I, I myself don't mind. Can we do that legally is what I'm saying. It, there is provision to bring council up to speed of an investigation, partial way through. I'm suspect.
I'm gonna let Annette answer that, but.
So if I can.
Integrity Commissioner is bringing us up to speed. He's only bringing us up to speed saying he's investigating.
Yeah.
He's not giving council details until it's all said and done. Correct me if I'm wrong, Annette.
Correct. If I'm understanding Counsel Kasonberg's comment as it relates to section fifteen point one. We would be changing the second sentence of that paragraph to read. Um, and Counsel Kasonberg, you can correct me if I'm wrong. If the investigation process is anticipated to or takes more than ninety days. The integrity commissioner, as it's currently worded, shall provide notice to council. However, what we're saying is the integrity commissioner shall seek approval of council to, to go beyond the ninety days and advise the parties. Does that?
That's exactly what counsel, he's nodding up and down, yes.
So from what I hear from Counsel Kasonberg, he's putting on the floor two potential amendments. The first is that uh, we change paragraph fifteen point one to include uh, approval of council if the matter will take longer than ninety days and to change uh, paragraph six point two to define timely manner as ten days. And the ten days is related to classifying the complaint as part of the intake process. And all of this, please keep in mind, takes place within the prescribed ninety days unless, as Counsel Kasonberg's amendment proposes, is council approves going longer than ninety days. Now the question arises, what if council doesn't approve the ninety days and the integrity commissioner simply can't respond within the ninety days? You've then imposed a requirement on the integrity commissioner that he can't do because you've said we're not agreeable to ninety days, at which point the integrity commissioner may then have to um, send that work out to somebody else and does the process start over or take longer?
Counsel Casper?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not so sure that, that that's the, the uh, the fundamental issue here though. I think that um, you know, I, I, I speak with this very specific example and, and I apologize for being specific about this, but um, the, the integrity commissioner presenting to a council that they can't complete the ninety days because they're understaffed. Or uh, they didn't get to it promptly or any of that kind of thing. To me, those are not valid reasons for the integrity commissioner to provide notice that uh, they intend to extend an investigation, that, that, there, we pay them to be staffed appropriately. And um, and I can appreciate, you know, notions around COVID and so forth, but this government had to operate through COVID as well and um, and couldn't use that excuse that we can't deliver on services. So I don't think our contractors particularly have a, a lot of leg to stand on, on that front. And um, that would be the, the premise uh, with which I would say that uh, seek consent or um, uh, you know, let council know that there is something going on here. Um, uh, but just providing notice um, feels a little uh, weak in my opinion.
Counsel McDermott.
Uh, are we still talking on this point or? Well, let's find out the difference.
Well, you can bring up another point as well.
Oh, okay. No, I just, uh, on seventeen on penalties. Uh, basically what we're getting from everybody that comes here is an opinion. And there it says that, uh, you know, we have to recommend or suspension of services and then there's a whole other list. But I would say that some, we could also say that somebody um, was possibly non-compliant, but we could assume that it was a to us, a smaller breach of the code than anything that this is calling for. And as a sovereign council, we should be able to make that decision. That we should not be um, entrapped in just choosing from the list.
Annette, you want to respond on that?
Sure. So I think we've seen that in practice because in fact, council did deviate from um, the integrity commissioner's recommendations with um, respect to one other report. So you're not precluded from doing that, you do have sovereignty, council, you do have control. The municipal act does set out that those are the penalties based on what's contained within the municipal act. But you can choose to do something different.
That's true, you can still choose to, to, we still are sovereign and we can still forward to do whatever we'd like to do.
Absolutely. What, what the integrity commissioner brings forward is recommendations, but the ultimate authority is council.
Okay, good touch.
Other comments or questions? Okay, so we have a couple. Counsel Casper, get your hand up again.
Yeah, I just actually wanted to weigh in on Counsel McDermott's comments, because I think um, there's a little bit of value there. Um, and, and if we look at section eighteen point one on page one seventy, it, it says the council may on the basis of a recommendation from the integrity commissioner. So I think Counsel McDermott is asking an interesting question, which is um, you know, if, if council wishes to act uh, independently of the integrity commissioner um, on something that, that isn't infraction. Um, then um, there, there's this opportunity and I'm not sure that the wording of eighteen point one um, is um, is comprehensive of that idea yet, right? There, there are some other sort of remedies, right? In, in eighteen point one and um, it, it's not just the basis of the recommendation from the integrity commissioner, but council itself could elect uh, to put aside the recommendation of the integrity commissioner and, and act through use of items A through E or subsections A through E of eighteen point one. So I wonder if, if it isn't wise to sort of um, include an additional small clause in eighteen point one that says on the basis of the recommendation from the integrity commissioner or of its own will may also take any or May also take any or all of the following corrective or remedial actions.
Now.
But I think you want to be very careful with respect to wording because if you say of its own will. I think you want to make sure that there's a it's worded such that there's an investigation and a foundation. For the making and the taking of counsel's action.
I I understand, but you know, we we have seen, as has been pointed out, this council. Put aside essentially a recommendation to the Integrity Commissioner about a penalty and choose an alternate penalty. And I and I think that wording probably is important that would allow such. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I do acknowledge your point, Ms. Diamond, that. You know, the the notion is not to say that counsel can put aside an Integrity Commissioner investigation. It's that the recommendation. Could be modified by counsel's own intent.
Yeah, I think it's just. If I may respond, I think it's just a question of. How to properly word that because. You are able to do that based on how it's currently worded, but I think if you add in something like based on the will of counsel, again, it becomes a question of. How is the will of counsel? Like, like, what's the supporting evidence to oyster? The action. So you do have the authority that you're seeking already, as is, and we have seen that in action. So. You know, it's my suggestion that I don't think that the wording does need to be changed because it does incorporate your comments. If you do want something more explicit. I think it has to be carefully worded and it's not something that I could probably do off the cuff.
And and Mister Warden, to to wrap up my comments in this, I agree. I I was speculating about wording, but. Do cares required to make revisions to the wording so that it achieves that outcome? If if we want to go there.
Okay, so we have this report here. We've gone through it. So we have have maybe three potential changes. So would it be the wishes of counsel that we make those wording adjustments? And bring that back to the next council meeting for final approval. So you actually see it in writing without me just saying as amended. That way, our legal person and whatnot. Can have some time to get the proper wording and if you might want to reference that to somebody else for verification. So work for counsel. But I think I got a bunch of heads going up and down. So. I'm gonna read a bit of a motion here. The county council receives the Council of Conduct and Complaint Protocol Report. And the county council. Defers decision. Until. Let's look back wording that amendments are made to the wording. And to come back for final approval next meeting. You can word that far better than I am. I'll pick up here, but. That work for everyone? I'm getting a bunch of up and down head nodders, so I'm thinking that's what everybody wants. So do I have a mover to second? I think somebody over there said they'd move that counsel McDermott. Do I have a second? Counsel Hurley. So we'll get the amendments made and then look back. Next meeting for approval. Those in favor. Carry it. Okay, moving on. Tell me we weren't going to be done by lunch. I have a question. Corporate Services. Sean, employing retention or record retention.
I think you may have skipped one of this one.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Annette, your favorite one.
I think you're right to be.
Yeah, I am. And that is the. Cost related to the Integrity Commissioner.
So in April twenty twenty two, council requested a report regarding the costs. That have been incurred for services provided by the Integrity Commissioner. As well as information related to the issue of anonymity of a complainant. So I'll address the first issue of costs. Council has incurred costs of approximately sixty four thousand since the appointment of the Integrity Commissioner in twenty seventeen. So this amount equals about ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per year. Which is above council's budget of twenty five hundred per year. Within the report, you'll see where costs have been broken down and they've been broken down into four categories: investigation and reporting. Advice to members and staff. Training and education. And preparation of materials. The majority of those costs relate to investigation and reporting. Of approximately forty three thousand dollars. And those costs were spread over four complaints in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. The second issue. And anonymity of the complainant. The identity of a complainant is confidential. The Integrity Commissioner has the discretion to determine whether or not to disclose. The identity where the Integrity Commissioner feels that it is essential for the subject of the complaint to prepare a response. This discretion is codified by case law. The Supreme Court of Canada has ruled that an investigatory body, which includes the Office of the Integrity Commissioner. May determine its own procedures. The Ontario Court of Appeal. Has specifically commented that an investigative investigatory body. Need not put forward. Every detail of the case and does not need to name its informants. It can provide the substance of the complaint. So long as the subject is afforded a fair opportunity to respond to the complaint. Specifically in relation to an investigation. For an Integrity Commissioner. Where there has been a complaint, the Superior Court of Justice dealt with this. In a complaint against the deputy mayor in the city of Bond. What the court held in that situation in that in that case was that if there was sufficiently broad grounds given. That allowed the subject to meaningfully meaningfully respond to the complaint. The name of the complainant and the witnesses need not be disclosed. So basically, the courts have weighed in to say that a complainant. Their name may remain may remain anonymous. Unless it's necessary for the subject of the complaint to respond. So subject to any questions, I believe that that answers counsel's questions which were raised in April.
Okay, well, thanks, Annette. Counsel McDermott.
Yep, I realize everything that you have provided us with and I thank you for that because it was basically my question. I realize it's administrative law and you can make up anything you want. But I still don't think it's right.
I don't have any questions. Okay, not seeing any hands go up. I have a motion. County Council receives the cost related. To Integrity Commissioners and anonymity of the cover. I report. Moved by Counsel Willoughby, seconded by Counsel McDermott. Last chance for comments or questions. Those in favor. Let's carry. That we're moving on to Sean.
Thank you. We're named to send to you through you to counsel. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to present this report. The county subscribes to an annual update. To the Ontario Municipal Records Management System or commonly known as TOMRIN. TOMRIN forms the basis for the county's classification scheme and retention schedule as formalized in the county's records retention bylaw. Bylaw number three, six, nine, seven, twenty nineteen. The annual updates are provided by the Information Professionals, which is the vendor for TOMRINs. They conduct annual reviews of relevant legislation, industry guidelines, and best practices. And from this review, any necessary updates are then applied to TOMRINs and circulated to their subscribers, which Perk County is one. This year's updates amount to some minor adjustments to retention terms of seven classification categories. And these are highlighted in the attached table of this report. In order to better support. The administrative operational efficiency of Legislative Services Division and to assist in future access to staff reports. Staff are also recommending suspending the use of the C eleven category. And retaining staff reports and other agenda materials as permanent records within the agenda packages. So the reason for this change is because we now use. Electronic tools such as iCompass and Filehole for report creation and records retention respectively. These programs use robust search features which allow for easier retrieval of staff reports using keywords, which eliminates the need. The need to browse for reports by subject. This not only improves access to reports, but also eliminates the need for staff to break out and file individual reports by subject. Which is typical procedure prescribed by TOMRIN. Reducing the administrative burden associated with filing those records. As well as eliminating potential risk for inconsistencies over time in terms of assigning subject subject headings to. Individual reporters. So this. Additionally, by maintaining the staff reports and other agenda materials within their respective agenda packages. The county is preserving the context of the information as it was presented to counsel. And so this means staff and future researchers will be able to review council minutes. And then more easily refer back to the related staff report because it will be retained under the corresponding heading in the agenda. And just sort of dipping into my experience working at the Archives for about a half a decade. It often came up when researchers were reviewing council minutes from. Historical context. They have the decision made, but they don't have the information necessarily associated with it to. As what led to that decision. So by making this move, we're sort of securing future access and transparency. For for future researchers and generations to come. So this does mean that staff and future researchers are will be able to review council minutes. And then more easily refer back to related staff report. And this change will create more administrative efficiency and improve, as I was saying, future access to public information. And so that's all I wanted to highlight in the report. I'm happy to to receive any questions at this time.
Thanks, Sean. Questions for Sean on his report? Seeing any hands, not hearing none. I have a motion. The council receives the retention schedule update report. The council approves the updates to Schedule A of Bylaw Number three, six, nine, seven slash. Two oh one nine. Counsel McKenzie moves. Seconded by. Deputy Lord Nagets. Last chance for comments. Those in favor. That's carried. Moving on, Annette.
Uh, thank you. The report. The report provide the report before you. Provides a summary of activities for the month of September. And before I touch on those highlights, I want to give a shout out to Archives. And the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee for their successful dedication ceremony of the Reflections Garden. Which was in celebration of the fiftieth anniversary of Stratford Perth Archives. It included an unveiling of a new sign and the donation of a bench to sit as a place of rest and reflection. Speaking of. The fiftieth anniversary, Listwell, Mitchell, and Stratford Newspapers continue to highlight the treasures of the Archives. Which is a series that was created in honor of the fiftieth anniversary. An update on the work of the various divisions. For finance, the audited financial statements should be coming in November, as well as the county's asset management plan. And budget preparations for twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five are underway. For POA, they continue to work through their backlog related to COVID. A number of increased charges as well as a number of increased. Challenges to those charges. And the additional strain which is placed on those. Which is placed on the courts as a result of those electing to now attend court in person. We're also pleased to welcome back Linda Becker as the Acting Manager of Court Services. You'll recall that Ms. Becker retired after twenty two years of committed service to the county. And she is here to assist with that backlog to also do some training for succession planning. As we advertise for a new manager of of court services. For IT and GIS. They are continuing to assist with the Cadlink Mobile Data Terminal Project for Paramedic Services. And GIS has completed the Public Natural Environment Web Viewer. And an accompanying hard copy map book and the mailing list to assist with the new official plan. Legislative Services is assisting with the municipal election compliance audit committee applications. Joint orientation for new council and the records management program is moving along quite well. In terms of professional development. Staff in Corporate Services and across the organization attended the annual emergency. Management exercise for better preparedness. And a clearer understanding of the roles and responsibilities during a declared emergency. And staff across the organization also attended a high-impact policy report writing skills workshop. Which was designed for clear, brief, and more purposeful driven writing. And the CAOs of the lower tiers were also invited to participate. And finally, two quick reminders. First is that the applications for the updated Cultivating Fonds to the Grant Program. They remain open until November. And the seventy fourth Annual Perth Municipal Day is scheduled to take place on November sixteenth.
Questions for Annette. Not seen any hands. I have a motion. Council receives the Legal Department Services September two thousand and twenty two update report. Counsel Collins moves, seconded by Deputy Lord Nagets. Those in favor. Yodoki, we're moving on again here. Paramedic Services. And I have Mike in the room here now. So are you doing all the reports today? Okay, just checking. Carry on, Mike.
Thank you. And through the warden, yes, I'll be doing all our reports today. We had a few. We had a few. People that were unexpectedly off, so I'll be filling in today. So the. First one, first report that we have here is the Alternative Destination Guidelines Provincial Innovation for Palliative Care Patients in Perth County. And this report here is a good news story. It's an example of modernizing paramedic services and. Innovating the way that we do things within the community. Here in Perk County. This is something that council had invested in and had approved in our twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two business plan. Which is again, good news. It's low-hanging fruit in that we can use the current and existing infrastructure with some training to be able to better serve our community. And what this really boils down to is that persons that are unfortunately experiencing. End of life and are at home. And are needing support are able to go directly into hospice care. As opposed to to the emergency department. So there are some parameters around this that they would need to be registered with. Hospice prior to participating in this program. And we do have some contact information within this report. If there's any public that are doing this. Right now or that are reading this, that they'd be able to contact us or their local hospices. For this. So so far, we've partnered with Huron Residential Hospice. Jessica's House Residential Hospice and Rotary Hospice in Stratford, Perth. And it's also an example of collaboration with the province, with our local municipalities, and also with our. Local health partners. So that's my report. Does any I can pass it back over to you there, Warden.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike on this report? Pretty straightforward. Okay, motion County Council receives the Alternative Destination Guidelines slash Provincial Innovation for Palliative Care Patients in Perth County report. Counsel Willoughby moves, seconded by Counselor Ike. Those in favor. That's carried. We're moving on to the next one.
Thank you. And again, through the warden. So this is vehicle tent. This is propering council is the first. The results for a vehicle tender that went out to replace our two pickup trucks. That operate as emergency vehicles here at Paramedic Services. These two pickup trucks are. Used by our commanders. And are used in operations. They also are used to carry or to tow our. Emergency management slash. MCI trailer, should we require it. This trailer was used as an example during the decanting of cedar crop previously. The vehicles are emergency worthy, so they are response vehicles. And we also carry extra equipment on them so that if we have a larger scale. Not huge accident, but say multiple patients at a motor vehicle collision, we can. Not huge accident, but say uh multiple patients at a motor vehicle collision, we can use or uh bring extra equipment to the scene. We also use these, these uh, these vehicles for access in inclement weather for difficult areas to uh get into. So if we're dealing with um some off-road access to patients or something like that, we can also use them for these purposes. They are on a replacement cycle of uh seven years, and this year is their replacement cycle, and it was part of our business plan. But when we went out to tender, um, the the complete cost of both vehicles plus the retrofitting that you needed to put lights and sirens on them. Resulted in an overage than what we originally attempted to anticipate it. So this is why it's uh coming forward. But the other reason why it's coming forward is that we also added into the uh requests for tender and option for a hybrid. Uh, so that we can consider that. Um, you'll see that it was $5,000 more per vehicle for a hybrid. Um, and it would have some other implications. We have the infrastructure to charge them because all of our ambulance space have extension cords and they can just charge on the 15 amp regular system. However, um, it would have an impact on fleet in that um our mechanics currently are not trained to uh deal with the uh or to maintain. The electrical systems of these vehicles. So we either have to outsource it or to train our mechanics. Um, so I presented to you here, or Mike probably was going to present to you here, uh four options um to. Um, consider. So the first option um is dealing with conventional uh conventional vehicle and. Would be to purchase one vehicle and hold our second vehicle right now, only replace one this year. And then in three years, we would replace the um second vehicle so we could offset them. So that way we could uh manage. The purchase of this vehicle within our budget this year. And then we would offset this just for future years, what the capital expense would be for the vehicle. So we would basically be on a altering um cycle of around every three or three and a half years, we'd be looking at replacing. One of the pickup trucks instead of replacing them both every seven years. So that's option one. Option two is to do the same thing, but with a hybrid truck. Option three is to do um. Both vehicles as planned uh this year, conventional, and that would result in a 50,000 or roughly a $50,000 over capital uh budget spending for this year. Or option four would be to do the same thing with a hybrid. And I just make note that there was um. The word conventional wasn't air. It should have said hybrid in option four. So if we are selecting option four, then um it would be for a hybrid. So two awards, the tender Saint Mary's Ford for hybrids uh pickup trucks, and you'd be looking at two, and that would be 60,000 over capital spending for this year. There were two submissions for the uh tender. One was Saint Mary's Ford, one was Lunar. And Saint Mary's Ford would be the winner of these uh bids because they came in at a lower price. And uh finally, if we do go with the one option as mentioned in the report, or sorry, if we go with a um. Uh, the one vehicle, as mentioned in the report, we would need to have a conversation with um Saint Mary's Ford to make sure that the prices are still honored for a single vehicle purchase as opposed to a two. So those are um the four options, and I am seeking direction from council today uh to help with this decision.
Council Wilhelm, uh, I have a hybrid and I'm not pleased or convinced that it saves fuel or improves uh. Climate, so I would uh look to option one, and uh I think if you can get away with the. Putting the second vehicle as a spare for three years, then I think that's good planning.
Hi, Council Mackenzie. I would agree with Counselor Wilhelm's comments. Uh, although I do have an additional comment. Uh, with regards to purchases and then applies later on in the meeting with uh with the pickup trucks that we're talking about. If we ever looked at leasing. And we looked at that in West Perth this year, and there seemed to be some considerable savings um to lease. And I'll still go along with the Counselor Wilhelm's comment because we need to deal with that currently. But maybe in the future, we could, we could look at the other options that could be available.
Other comments?
Council Hurley? The hybrid component, there seems to be confusion with hybrid and full electric, and I think people get it confused when you're talking hybrid. It it it's still a, a gas engine driving a generator to charge batteries. So there really isn't any plugging in. And even I'm finding salesmen get confused on this yet, but I, yeah, I I'm with option one as well. The efficiency of gas engines and diesel engines. GM is really doing a boom now with a, an eco diesel, and I know lots of people who are purchasing them, and it's just wicked. Wicked savings in fuel efficiency. So I I agree with uh Counselor Wilhelm. Just some comments.
Other comments? Okay, so. I just got one comment or question. Before I read any motions here. Leasing, I've never leased. I only buy. I like depreciation. Would it mean not put way too many miles on that vehicle to make leasing really a non-option?
Just something I can comment, Jim, is that uh our operations manager looked at it up and down sideways and crossways and. For the uh miles that we put on, it was uh, there wasn't a advantage for us to lose. It may not be the case in everybody's case, but.
Well, I'm thinking this vehicle is going to be all over Perth County, so I'm thinking the body is fairly high. Would it not?
So yeah, through the warden, um, yes, the mileage would be relatively high. Um, the other piece to that is that. We actually go into these vehicles and uh drill holes in them.
Yes.
And we completely retrofit them to all emergency lights and stuff. So we actually put the antennas on the roof and then all the emergency lights in the entire body. So. Um, certainly it's an option that we can look at in terms of leasing, but we would have to work closely with the vendor to make sure that uh when we return it, that what the repercussions of that would be.
I have a good idea what they'll be. You're not gonna like them. Okay, I've got a motion here. County Council receives the Commander Emergency Response Vehicles Request for Tender Results Report. And the council direct staff proceed with option one of this report. And can I just throw a little caveat in there? Well, uh, you said you had to check the Saint Mary's Ford versus price of one versus two?
I, the tender was for two vehicles, so I, we we would be going back and requesting just one at this point. So. I'm not sure if that will impact or not, but I wanted direction before I went to do that.
Okay, so proceed with option one, provided pricing. It just remains relatively the same. It's still way lower than that here. That one's going to be so. Do I have a mover and a seater? Counselor Ike moves. Deputy Lord Nagets second. Those in favor, carried. Moving on again there, Mike.
So the third report is our annual. Response Time Performance Plan Update. So this report is one that I brought previously as well. With respect to um the Response Time Standard Performance Plan, and it's a legislative requirement that we renew it annually. Um, during the month of uh October, um, is usually what the month is that they determine as the ministry determines for us to uh provide these updates. So um, you know, in early in this year, we did have a conversation in council with respect to. The RTPP performance, and one of the action items is to go back and look at the 2021 data. And come back with any recommendations in terms of when we meet or when we don't meet uh certain criteria. So we did go ahead and do that. And so I, this report goes a little more in depth into. The measurement and a little more in depth into uh providing some of the findings of that review that we did. So. Um, measurement limitations is a couple of things to point out. Um, that when we're measuring this, it's very frustrating as a paramedic service for chief. To have a measurement that we have to measure, but that we can't control how we're dispatched to. So for example, we have two codes, code three or code four that we're called out to. And they're asking us to measure um response on five different levels of a patient acuity. So CTAS one life threatening situation. Um, would not be necessarily, uh, you know, we could be going to a broken leg, um, but then have a heart attack and still have to respond to that broken leg first. So that has an impact on the way we measure things um when we set this uh, when we set our RTPP. Secondly, um. Um, oh, sorry, just to address that, though, the ministry is over the next um several years and starting in Mississauga right now. Um, bringing in a program called the Medical Priority Dispatch System. And so this is a dispatch triage tool that's used elsewhere across actually the world. And it's something that Ontario is going to be implementing over the next several years in different dispatch centers. London Dispatch is one of the later dispatches to move forward with it. So we're still looking at a few years down the road. Um, but. They are addressing that, um, so that will come to fruition at some point. Um, the data that we look at, when we look at response times, there are some limitations to that because we have small sample sizes. So it's good news for us because we don't have. The size of our service, we don't have too many cardiac arrests for um immediately life threatening calls, which make up. Sudden cardiac arrest, point five percent of our calls and and CTAS one are 1.1% of our calls. And so the small numbers of data is what actually causes the swing sometimes in the higher swings, ups and downs in our um. In our dataset and in and and in our results. So with that in mind, um, you know, on, we do have the results here for the mid-year. Uh, January to uh the beginning of July's results for our um sudden cardiac arrest, CTAS one right through CTAS five. And so you can see that mid-year we are at 39.3%, um, which was 28 calls. And CTAS one, we're at 73.7% of the time, we're meeting that eight-minute threshold. The sudden cardiac arrest is also special because um the metric that we'd be looking at also looks at when a defibrillator arrives at the side of the patient. And we're working closely with our uh partners in the fire services to get a data sharing agreement in place so that we can look at. You know, those 28 calls, might, these numbers might change a little bit because we also have a tier response program in our communities, um, which is important. So then if we go to our analysis, we were able to confirm that rural areas do take, of course, longer to respond to calls than urban areas. That's something that we'd all expect. Um, location of ambulances in relation to the calls um. Uh, um, matter. Um, so we're, we're, we're the, you know, like the, that's rural area, but also. Even in the urban area, that makes a difference. As an example, if we're responding even across town in our community here in Stratford. Um, it's going to take longer to get to the west end because our station is on the east end of the city. When ambulances are mobile between two stations, we have a fluid deployment plan. Um, we're covering different areas that of course has an impact on response times. And we also promote that our uh paramedics uh respond swiftly and directly to the call, but we also don't want them to respond dangerously to the call, running red lights or. Uh, driving at excessive speeds. Um, and then so then if we move on to some of the specific action items in terms of uh some of the analysis that we did. What we're looking at are a couple of things. One is to keep the RTPP targets the same. So we're, we're, we're suggesting we're going to just leave them the way they are because we know that there's going to be these swings in CTAS one sudden cardiac arrest data. But we also wanted to, we also want to um, you know, monitor things really closely. So. A recommendation, and we've already put this into play, is to enhance our audit process. So we would, we would audit these types of calls. But any call that um is over 10 minutes for sudden cardiac arrest or 12 minutes for a CTAS one. To really dig deep into it and make sure that we're taking for each of those times that those things happen. Why it took more than 10 minutes or why it took more than 12 minutes. So it might be, again, the rule response, or it might actually be. Um, another reason that we don't have any ambulances. We don't have one ambulance available in the community because it's really busy at the time of day or whatever. So we can track that over time. We can um a- and then use that data to make our decisions moving forward. Uh, number three was the data sharing agreement. I was tiered response and I spoke to that. So that is something that's actively being pursued with the fire services. And I have support from all of our fire chiefs to do that. Um, and then the, the last two is to advocate for uh changes with the province whenever um the opportunity arises for the MPDS because. It will help us to match our response times to the calls. And as we were reported to previously by um the consultants. Um, pre uh in the consultant report, earlier in the year, the call volumes. Are expected to go up dramatically in this county over the next 20 years. So anything we can do, including MPDS, would be really important to us because then we could be looking at. You know, um, if there's a low acuity person, maybe waiting an hour or two hours to respond to them, whereas if there's somebody that is in a immediate crisis, we're responding right away. So those are the types of things that MPDS can do. And then finally, the long-term, um, uh, the finally, I would recommend that we look. Um, in the future at conducting a long-term master plan to support the expected increase in call volume. And as I said in the report, to optimize station locations, um, which can also have an impact on response time. Um, and those are my comments from the report. So I will pass it over to the warden and open for discussion.
Questions for Mike on this report?
Council Hurley? No, it's more of a comment. Great report. This stuff is, I, I thoroughly enjoy. Statistics, where we're sitting, where we're going, new approaches. It's so important. And again, this is where we come into planning as well as we plan development going forward, folks and our council. It's so important because we're thin. We know we're thin in areas. And it's tough to get things done, and paramedic services is a big one. So where we keep our elderly, where they are, where we do development in relation to where our vehicles are sitting, where they can be there quick, where they can expand quick and get around. As opposed to pound a note into the rural and to little hamlets or towns where we might. Decide to put, you know, some affordable housing just randomly. So important. Great report. Thanks. That's all I got.
Anyone else? Some of those locations and whatnot, that will be part and parcel with the future discussions with the government and Oxford Services. That isn't just necessary to change the economy.
Cooperation of all services.
Okay, uh, I have a motion. I got a question for you. The Perth County Council receives the Ministry of Health Response Time Performance Plan and renewal. Report for information moved by Council Wilhelm, seconded by Council. Those in favor, that's carried. And I have a quick question for you, Mike. I know you're done. So you and I had a little meeting on Monday. And one of the discussions we had was regards to. Uh, offload times and you, you're seeing it in the news and I'm getting calls. So you're seeing where EMS services have gone into code red. There's no ambulance available. And we haven't been there for a while, but I'm sure we've been close a couple of times. Uh, and so what the problem is, if we send an ambulance to London. Uh, you might be six hours to offload that ambulance or into the regional Waterloo. Cambridge had, uh, their Waterloo was in code red on Friday or Saturday night. And they had six or seven amber dozen ambulances backed up at the Cambridge Hospital waiting to unload. So just in case you get called, that's what that's all about. And you did have a meeting with London yesterday, yesterday?
Sure, through the warden. Um, yeah, a couple of uh things just with respect to your comments. Um. We did have a meeting with London on the 18th of uh this week, so we're actively working with them and our partners to. Make sure that we can do whatever we can in London to make sure that our units get back to the areas as quick as possible. Um, in terms of solving the problem, there's only so much we can do, certainly um from Perth County, but more on that to come. Um, the three things that we're doing is um, London has agreed to um. Provide the offload delay beds uh for their patients in their area. So for, for responding to the area, we pick up a patient, we get to the hospital. If there's an offload delay bed through their programs available, they've opened that up to us. So we're real pleased with that and and uh their chief down in that area for, for offering that. Um, and then we're going to um engage our chiefs in a local area that's around London to make sure that our deployment plans are aligned, so that we do not have a um discrepancy. So for example, maybe the way that Oxford's deployment plan. So for example, maybe the way that Oxford's deployment plan is written means that they're we're going in more than them, like so that we can kind of share the, the, the overage workload, if you will. Um, and then the third thing is, um, consideration of, uh, providing a letter to the province just reminding the province of what is, uh, the impacts that's happening, not just on London, but that, that this residual, this original effect that's happening elsewhere. Um, statistically speaking, um, it'd be important for council to know as well that we have, um, we had 10 incidences in August that we are running calls into London, either from our stations or because we're previously in the area. And then September, we have 13. And so that isn't a huge number, but, uh, for us, it equates to, um, and, you know, a few hour, you know, several hours of us being in those areas, which means that, um, you know, the surge capacity that we've designed within our system to contain ourselves is, is, is being tried a little bit as well. So there will be periods of time that we will see us dipping down to close to zero, or if not for a few minutes, a zero ambulance. So I will expect that that's going to happen over the next, um, you know, over the months to come if this problem continues to, um, be persistent.
I just want a council to be aware, because I'm sure you're going to start getting calls every once in a while. The ambulance took so long to get here. Um, sometimes it's not our fault. Anyway, we're moving on. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, work.
Um, Phil Wilson asked that, man. Are you doing that, John? Or is Bill going on?
Phil's coming.
Oh, Mike? I got a comment.
All right, yeah, come find me.
Morning, council. And thank you, warden. Um, I will present the report that's before you here, um, which is a report, um, which is provided for council's information and is with regards to, uh, tender results for the procurement of a three-quarter ton pickup truck, which is included in the 2022 capital budget and is intended to replace an existing three-quarter ton truck, uh, used by the roads division. Uh, this bid opportunity was posted on the county's online bidding system where there were a total of two plant takers and two final submissions. The tender results are listed within the report with the low bid submission tendered by Oxford Dodge Chrysler in the amount of $71,700 excluding HST. Um, in keeping with the county's procurement policy, the CAO has purchasing authority to authorize award of this tender as a value does not exceed the amount whereby council approval is required. And this purchase, um, as I mentioned earlier, is included in the 2022 capital budget. Um, however, we will be looking to carry forward, um, budget funds into 2023. Um, as that will be required since the delivery of this asset won't be until, um, probably towards the end of Q2, uh, of next year. Um, we did a, uh, a comparison of online municipal tenders, um, with results posted for similar assets, uh, three-quarter ton work trucks. Um, the results ranged, um, for the ones that I could pull up, uh, between 69,000 and, uh, little under 73,000, um, excluding HST as well. And if there are any questions to this, uh, report or the purchase, uh, myself or John are, uh, available and happy to take them. Thank you.
Okay, questions, uh, Counselor Wilhelm?
Yeah, uh, I don't have any questions. Uh, just have a comment. I think we need to, uh, review our procurement policy because I don't think this online bidding is working. Uh, when you only get two results, uh, I would hope there'd be a lot of other dealers that are interested, but maybe they're not interested in online bidding. So I would certainly suggest that we review our procurement policy.
Laurie?
Uh, through the warden, I can, um, uh, respond to that in the next term. We do have that policy on the list for review. So it will be done.
I think what, one of the reasons Counselor Wilhelm is highlighting that is we get an Asaba Bayfield report and they were looking for almost an exact same truck. But they would only put it out to, uh, companies within their watershed. And it was purchased in their watershed and the price was a little over 55,000. Yeah, it was a bit cheaper. So that's why Counselor Wilhelm was bringing that up when I was, if he didn't, I would would you have kind of wondered at different times, we don't get a lot of response. And I'll be honest with you, I don't even know who meter contracting is.
Uh, through you, the ward, warden, uh, Lunar Contracting. I've been kind of keeping an eye on them because they have submitted, um, pricing for multiple contracts, whether it's, it's fleet or construction. And uh, I haven't really been able to get a very good company profile on them. With their tender submission there, um, the references provided there, I asked for three municipal references. And they had only provided one, which was the government of Yukon, I believe. So.
Okay. No, thanks, Phil. Okay, I have a motion here. County Council receives tender results 2022 slash O three three slash O two. Supply a three-quarter ton pickup truck report. Moved by Council McDermott, second by Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor? That's carried. And moving on. Also reports. Anybody have anything for council reports? Uh, bylaws. So the first bylaw on your bylaws has been eliminated because that's coming, that was deferred and coming back next meeting. So we went to the next couple. And as one is bylaw 38992022, be read a first, second and third time and finally passed this 20th day of October 2022, and that is your record, record retention schedule. Counselor Wilhelm moves, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? That's carried. And your next bylaw is with regards to OPA 206. And that's bylaw 3900 dash 2022, be read a first, second and third time. And finally, classed this 20th day of October, 2022. Counselor Cummins moves up. Counselor Duncan seconds that. Last chance for questions. Those in favor? That's carried. Okay, and I almost forgot. Notice of motions, we don't have any, I don't believe. Other business? Announcements? I'm only going to say one thing there. I wish everybody running in the election on Monday the best of success. Close session. We do have a closed session that we've added in. And so I need a motion to go into closed session. Counselor McHerman, second by Deputy Ordinigus. Those in favor? That's carried. We'll just pop here for a brief second until Sean. And that time was, and that's to deal with the legal potential litigation. And that was a 12:08. Almost got that. Okay, so we are down now to confirmatory bylaw. And I have a bylaw here, 3901 dash 2022. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the Corporation of County Perth. That's regular meeting, now October 20th, 2022, is read a first, second and third time and finally passed October 20, 2022. Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Duncan. Those in favor? That's carried. And then I have a motion here that here in a 12:26. Moved by Counselor Hurley, seconded by Counselor Wright. That's carried. Thank you very much. Well, it's a little quicker than the